All right, good evening. It is six thirty-nine P M on Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. I am Brian Leighton, the school committee chair, and I am calling the school committee meeting to order. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page, and will be found in Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within twenty-four hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may be in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. The first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If you please rise.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open it up to public comment from the public. Anyone on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, I'll open up to public comment from the committee. Mr. Scullenbrini?
Just a quick comment. I want to thank the town for voting to support the warrant measure that allowed for town investments to be invested pursuant to the prudite investor rule. I think that's a modernization step that needs to happen. I think it's something that will hopefully put the town on better financial footing, and hopefully it will be good for the schools.
Thank you. Ms. Ashenbaum?
I just wanted to mention that the master planning committee is holding a townwide meeting on December fourth at the Lunenburg Library from six thirty to eight to continue their discussion about the direction we would like our community to move in. Also, there is the third, I think it's the third survey, is available on the town website, and the superintendent has sent it home to all families.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda is the chair's report. I have a few items. We had a very successful town meeting. The town did pass the additional chapter seventy funding to the school budget. Also, the study was approved for the Brooks House as well. And we heard a great presentation by Mr. Scullenbrini as well. The annual tree lighting I had down is December fifth, so you can mark your calendars, and also I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully a successful winter trial for all the sports, all the athletes playing sports. Next item was the student representative report. I don't believe we have a student representative tonight.
We do.
The next item on the agenda is review and approve minutes. We have the regular session minutes from October second, two thousand twenty-four. Are there any questions, comments, revisions? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Still moved to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Our minutes are approved from October second, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve line item transfers, warrants, and donations. We had warrants from November fifth to November fifteenth totaling two hundred ninety thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. I don't believe we have any line item transfers or donations today.
Not this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start by saying that the select board did vote and approved our funding for a couple of items that were on our capital plan, one being the truck and plow, and the other being the middle high school safety window film. So, thank you very much to the select board for that support. An update on our search for a director of facilities. We did conduct interviews last week for round one, and are moving into round two interviews beginning tomorrow. The hope is to have an offer out and have someone accept the position shortly after the Thanksgiving break, so fingers crossed on that. We did have our school-specific assessment forums for families on November fourteenth. The meetings were not highly attended through Zoom, but the meetings were recorded, and the slides from the presentation along with those recordings have been posted on the district website, on the main page under back-to-school information. The Thanksgiving food drive to benefit the Lunenburg Food Pantry ends tomorrow, so anybody who was intending to contribute, who hasn't yet, the school, each school has a specific list of items that they're trying to collect, so please check our district website for more specific information by school for the drive. The annual gift card drive that is organized by our Lunenburg Public School Secretaries has kicked off, seventh annual event here. Each year, we receive gift card donations from members of our very generous community, and thanks to all who contribute, we have helped numerous families over the last six years. Collection for the gift cards will go on through December sixth, and these gift cards can be dropped off at any of our schools. They can be sent in by mail, or e-cards can be sent directly to Mona Bowen at mbowen@lunenburgschools.net. Mona is our secretary over at the middle school. Some suggestions for the gift cards that would benefit our families with all age children could include Walmart, Target, Visa, and the Dollar Store. Grocery gift cards also are very helpful to many families this time of year, but any gift card would be greatly appreciated. And for those who may not be in a position to make a donation this year, it would be great if people could help get the word out about this drive. A few calendar reminders. The next school committee meeting will be December fourth, six thirty P M hybrid from Town Hall, and then December eighteenth, six thirty P M hybrid from here at the middle high school. Reminder that schools will close, be closed, Monday, December twenty-third for the holiday break, and will reopen on Thursday, January second. The next P T O meeting is Monday, December second at seven P M here at the middle high school. Our next PACSAL meeting is Thursday, December fifth at six P M. This is a support group meeting via Zoom. And again, one more reminder that the annual tree lighting will be happening on Thursday, December fifth at six P M at the gazebo on the Lower Common. Annually, our high school band performs to get everyone in a holly jolly spirit. The student council usually has some goodies for sale, as well as the Cub Scouts, and I understand that the P T O is looking into a way that they might actually be able to partake this year as well. And of course, we're expecting a visit from Santa. So hopefully folks can attend, and hopefully the weather cooperates and provides a nice evening for the event. And I too would like to offer everyone wishes for a happy Thanksgiving. That's what I have for you this evening.
When is the start of the Christmas break?
Actually, as soon as students leave on the Friday afternoon.
So the twentieth?
The twentieth.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Yes, the twentieth would be the last day. It's a typical day, regular dismissal time, and schools will be closed until January second.
Thank you.
What are the questions, comments to the committee members have on the superintendent's report? Mr. Przowski?
I wanted to say that donating to the secretary's gift card drive is incredibly easy. I did it last year using Target and e-cards, and it takes literally less than a minute. And there was a Target sale for, I think it was Black Friday, and gift cards were on sale, so you pay less money than they give you. I know, it made no sense. Gift cards were on sale last year at some point, and it was so easy to just send them the gift card info via email, and they got it, and it was just, it was less than a minute of work. Thanks for that.
All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. We have our guest here, Mr. Michael Ray Jeffries, who is the chair. Welcome.
Thank you. Do I need to press anything here?
As long as it's green.
Yep, it's green.
Is it green on your side?
Yeah, we have green. I don't know if yours is. Do you see a green? Just press longer.
Press the button longer.
There we go. Thank you. Just press it longer. More of a conversation, less of a presentation, but good evening. Happy to be here with you guys. So to the superintendent, the chair and vice-chairing members of the school committee, it's always a pleasure. I think this is one of the few boards in town where I think I have had a one-to-one conversation with every member of this board due to our, you know, years of working together. So I'm happy to give an update on where we're at with municipal building design. I also would like to hear, of course, any concerns, feedback, questions that you have, and I'd have to answer them, or I'll take some notes and follow up with you afterwards. So the municipal building design committee, I want to go into a little bit of history here, and then I kind of, hopefully we'll keep this to... I always say ten minutes, but my ten minutes usually means thirty, so I want to try to be succinct here as possible. So in the town of Lunenburg, you know, we've had a lot of history with trying to resolve our building concerns. I think, you know, there's some memory of a committee that was formed in the nineteen eighties that was looking at Town Hall and other matters. We had a reuse committee, building reuse committee that was initially created in the early two thousand teens that was looking at the former primary school, as well as that parcel back there in the Ritter Lot area, and really trying to figure out, that was around the time of the creation of the Architecture Preservation District, and trying to create opportunities to create a more business-centered center of town while also preserving architectural features throughout what ended up becoming a preservation district. The recent iteration of it was initially called the T C Passios, I think, Design Committee, and now it's the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. So the process we've undergone there is our initial charge was to look at repurposing the T C Passios building for municipal school and community uses. That was looking to relocate school offices out of the current, you know, where you're at in T C Passios, giving, I think everyone, you all know what those offices are like, you know, two outlets pretty much per room, you know, the fuses blow out every time air conditioner is running. And so really trying to help that building get to a better position. I think the school committee is more uniquely aware of the challenges of using that building, given that it was vacated from being a school. And then we were also looking at municipal needs and the community spaces. We were engaged in a lengthy process. We worked with an architectural firm during that time. We met with numerous organizations in the community to try to identify the space needs. It's roughly fifty-five thousand square feet. There was a lot of interest in maximizing that fifty-five thousand square feet from a lot of different user groups, and Boys and Girls Club had some interest in the for-school, after-school programs there, as well as some of the intricacies as we've learned with the ACE program. Ultimately, the pandemic occurred, and we got hit with a very hefty price tag of close to thirty million dollars, of which about fourteen million was for really co-operates, and that was a pretty substantial number. Where we then pivoted was, you know, one of the concerns that we heard from the community at that time was twofold. One was, I want a comprehensive plan before I agree to any money. And the other was, you know, what are we doing with Town Hall and Ritter Building? And if that's not part of the plan or the motive here, then I'm not interested. So the select board repurposed the group to be, to look at all municipal buildings. And so not just T C Passios, but Ritter, Town Hall, and the Brooks House were all kind of brought into the umbrella. And so, you know, we were engaged in a process of working to come up with our task. The select board's task was to come up with distinctively different options of what we could do with these buildings. The board worked together, the committee worked together, come up with kind of three plans of what you can do with these buildings, and really three distinctively different concepts, and I think it kind of stood out to us that there was a hybrid amongst that. And so we created what was the fourth option, which is the hybrid option, and that's kind of where we've landed. The select board endorsed that, and that's where we are kind of moving forward with it. So I want to kind of express to you what that hybrid concept is, because that is kind of what our current, I wouldn't say marching orders, but I'd say that that's the general vision that we are marching toward. So again, the challenges, the challenges with our buildings is that the Town Hall was never built as a Town Hall. It was a former church that was donated to the town. It was built in around eighteen twenty, and I believe it was moved to that location. I'm going to get this year wrong, but I think it was on eighteen eighty, eighteen seventy time period. It was when it was moved to that location and the first floor was added to the building. But the town's never actually built a Town Hall. We know the Brooks House was a former, for the parcel that we're all on, that the library sits on, this building is on, the T C Passios, it's all one very large parcel formerly owned by the Brooks family, I believe, who then donated. And now we have, the Brooks House was functioned as the superintendent's office while I was in school, and later became kind of like a storage facility office, and now it's a largely empty building. We know what the T C Passios is. Ritter Building is a former library that was converted after the new library was built that was converted to house additional municipal offices. And then, you know, what is Town Hall? We know it's, again, overbuilt it. So, you know, part of our pivot when we hit that thirty-nine dollar price tag was, you know, we listened to the members of the community. I think that Mr. Scullenbrini, not Anthony, but the other, the other Mr. Scullenbrini in town has a lot of experience with historic preservation. I think that you guys know that what I do for a living, most of what I do is rehabilitating or preserving historic buildings, although I am no stranger to demolition, which I know sometimes me and Mr. Scullenbrini aren't odds about. But, you know, one of the things that came out of that was that we have to touch the passion buildings in town, that people drive by the center of town, they have an emotional attachment to Town Hall, to Ritter Building, and that any plan that doesn't address those buildings is likely not going to proceed. I think from a political standpoint, where I'm coming from in some of this, is how do you get things to pass? When you know that things need to happen, how do you get them to pass? And I think the answer is you incorporate needs of as many stakeholders as possible, including the school committee. I think I've lived in this town long enough to know that nothing happens in Lunenburg without the support of the parents and the support of the school committee. It is vital that you guys are a critical part of this project and of this plan. So where we are at, and I'm going to give the vision, and, you know, we kind of hit a pause point because of the tax issue. Certainly, we were not in a position to move forward with any borrowing requests, and that, I think that Mr. Beardmore succinctly said it well, was that took the air out of the room for a lot of, a lot of issues. And then, as we know, coming into this year, we knew that the tax bills were going out late, and that asking people for an override while also asking for a school override, while also having tax bills that show up three days before you ask them to vote is a recipe for disaster. And so we also did not come forward last year or this year with these requests. Our intent is to come forward next year with a borrowing request. So to explain the concept here, the concept is to be cost-effective in figuring out how to maximize the usage of these municipal buildings. The Town Hall, the vision for the Town Hall is for it to remain as a Town Hall, but in a different type of way, more like a meeting house. So in historic New England, we'd have meeting houses. This is still a feature in many communities. So the vision for what is now Lunenburg Town Hall, again, this is a wood frame structure, does not have any life safety system support, does not have sprinkler systems, was not designed for for weatherproofing or any of the modern needs of sustainability. But the vision is to maintain the second floor of that building as a primary meeting space. It is to remove what is now the town manager and H R office to get back to the original footprint of that room, to have a larger meeting room, and it's to look at the first floor and create three meeting rooms out of the first floor. So what is now the assessor's office would become a smaller, tight meeting room. For those of us who remember when the town clerk's office was larger in that building, is to go kind of back to that footprint of what was the town clerk's office, which is now the town clerk and a coffee room, and that would be a secondary meeting room, and then the third meeting room, or rather the fourth, on the third on the first floor, but fourth in the building, would be the back portion, which is now the financial area of Town Hall. So that way, we have a centralized location for all meetings to occur. There's another benefit of that as well, which is what happens during the day. During the day, this provides an opportunity for groups that need to meet, whether they're A A, Al-Anon, et cetera. It provides a meeting space for them. It provides community space for, you know, we could easily rent out a room for an artist who wants to display artwork, and there's other community needs that come up, and it provides a space for them. Also, as I get into the other buildings, what it also helps us do is future-proof. That one thing we know is going to be a need in the years, in the future, is maybe more offices. And so, you know, you're in a much better position to convert a meeting room into office space, that was previously office space, than to build a new structure, a new building to accommodate those needs. So there's an element of future-proofing in that concept of a meeting house. What is now the Ritter Building will become the primary location for the Lunenburg Public Schools. The way that we've addressed this, as we've met, as we know, with the school committee, with the previous chair, with the superintendent, various members to understand what the concerns were with utilizing that building, we think that based on the space needs analysis that we've done, that there's adequate space in the building to accommodate all of the current staff, future staff, and then also the ACE program, which we recognize the coordinator of that program is also part of the district staff and needs to be co-located. So the vision there is to maximize the use of that building. There's a couple of things to note. Most people maybe don't know this, but Carnegie gave donations all across the country to build libraries, and Lunenburg was one of them. And so it is very much so a Carnegie grant that was given over a hundred years ago in part, and it follows that formula of how the building is designed. They all had similar looks to them, and we know that what is the old Ritter Building, you come up some stairs, those stairs have since been removed, and it kind of lends itself, you know, all of us who remember it as library, you can see these features previously before the current round. But I think that what it offers is, one of the concerns we heard was that walls need to go all the way to the ceiling in that building. It needs to be an element of privacy, so that way when you're discussing school needs, that they're not being overheard by someone walking in the building. So that then, and part of the reason why that wasn't done previously is HVAC system. So we know that that building, one of the things with libraries is that libraries, pounds per square foot. I don't want to get too technical here, but depending on what the building is, determines what your pounds per square foot are. Libraries have the highest, because they have the most weight that they're going to hold papers heavy. And so libraries generally are built to about three to four hundred pounds per square foot, whereas your average house is forty pounds a square foot. Your average commercial structure is about a hundred. So libraries are very well-built, and this one is no stranger, it has excellent bones. And so the conversion then for this building to be offices, the building shows no signs of structural wear and tear, mostly cosmetic-related things, but we understand that the mission is to create offices, create adequate HVAC, create adequate privacy, and provide office space in the basement area, where we know that the ACE program, you know, you're teaching life skills to those eighteen through, I think, twenty-two-year-olds. And so, you know, there is that kitchen down there. We understand that there's going to need to be some of those life skill trainings, how you do laundry, how you prepare small meals, how you care for yourself, and so with there being a kitchenette down there already kind of lends itself in many ways to those functions. And then the concept is to build, you know, we called it an annex, but it's really the new Town Hall. And the new Town Hall would be on that parcel basically to the right of what is currently, and again, locations will change, don't quote me on this. But generally speaking, I think the concept is to what is, as you look at the building from Nassab, to the right of the building would be the new Town Hall. Basically, this is an administrative building that would take all of the current offices that are in Town Hall currently, that are currently in the Ritter Building, house them in one location, two-story building, and one feature is that there won't be meeting spaces in that building. Meeting spaces, of course, are expensive to have, especially that being utilized during the day. So the vision here is that we resolve the foreseeable needs for the municipal uses. We resolve the foreseeable needs for the school department. We resolve the foreseeable needs for the community, and we preserve T C Passios for another day. Now, I'm not saying it won't happen, but I think that, you know, the committee, I would not say has come to this conclusion. I think there's been multiple discussions among committee members, members of the select board, members of the town managers, and members of the school committee, in which we recognize that the disposition of T C P is in large part tied to the disposition of Turkey Hill. Now, that is not for us to fully say, but what I mean by that is that it's the center of the campus. We heard a lot of parents express concerns about that parcel being utilized for non-school purposes. We recognize that there's a need for additional athletic fields in town, and we know that the school committee is kind of working on Turkey Hill, you know, sharing up some of those building systems. And then you're right in the horizon of figuring out, you know, are you going to build a new school, or are you going to extend the existing one? In my opinion, I think that when we start getting into cost, everything I've talked about for Ritter, for Town Hall, for new Town Hall, the price tag we have in mind is under fifteen million. And we recognize that when you start touching T C Passios in any kind of way, and I'll get into that in a moment here, that the cost goes to the roof. What we want to be careful of is not boxing out future project needs. We know that Turkey Hill, all schools are expensive to build, and we want to make sure that we're not boxing out that need. So I think the committee's at a point now where we're ready to move forward in the areas in which we have consensus. I think that that affords the school committee additional time, figure out disposition of Turkey Hill, figure out what you're going to do there, and that's going to tie into what we determine to do with T C Passios. I think the municipal building design as a whole previously recognized that Turkey Hill would make a wonderful community center, that it is, you know, it's well-located on that parcel, has separate entrance, separate egress. It can do everything we want a T C Passios to do, but better, and it's not as old of a building. I think the, you know, but obviously cost comes into factor here, and, you know, anything with T C Passios is going to be significant money. And so before we go down that road, I think it's important that the school committee advances on the Turkey Hill discussion, so that way we can have those conversations together on how to proceed. So with that, I'll pause, see if there's any initial reactions and questions, and anything I can help clarify for the school committee this evening.
What questions or comments do the committee members have? Mr. Scullenbrini?
So would the, would the vision be if, and I know you guys don't have a consensus on this, but like you're thinking on this. Would the, if Turkey Hill became a community center, would the new Turkey Hill go on the site where T C Passios is?
My opinion, not representative of my opinion as a municipal building design committee, is I think that the school committee has more options than that. I think that there's large parcels in the Whalen area, I've spoke, I've talked about this previously, that I think would lend themselves well to a future school project. I think you have a large concentration of people that live in the Whalen area. It's a more densely populated area. And the two parcels that I'm specifically thinking of, one of them is about six to one acres. Granted, it's a wet parcel, not all of it's usable. And the other parcels are approximately forty acres. And so, you know, I think that the school committee has options for where a future school can go. I don't want to presume to estimate what the school committee may decide on that one.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
One of the things that I like about the town, and one of the reasons why we like the schools was because there was essentially like a campus. Is the, is your committee considering the value of having a campus versus like breaking things up? And I mentioned the campus idea for a couple of reasons. So like, having Dr. Burnham's office, the superintendent's office, close to school means that she can respond quickly to things. Sometimes, you know, crazy stuff happens, and she's running.
Across fields.
Literally, across town. That might not be great. The other thing is like, if you're a parent picking up multiple kids, and one of them is over by Whalen Lake, it's like, all right, so I gotta like figure this out, whereas like a campus sort of has the benefit of, you know, you can go to basically one or two locations and get everybody. And then there's like the ancillary benefits of like, you know, my son sees my younger son out on the playground, it's his high, or something like that. Why is the campus model something that you personally don't, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but do you not think that's a priority? And I, I mean, I'm genuinely curious, because you have a lot of experience with buildings. Like, does it not add value? Is it not something that people typically look for? Do you think it's a good feature to have, or is it just not worth the hassle of trying to shoehorn something back into that lot?
Yeah, well, Mrs. Scullenbrini, first I appreciate the question. You know, I think that the school committee's decision to put an article onto the town meeting warrant that ultimately passed to transfer ownership, or at least custody and control of that, of T C Passios to the select board away from the school committee, I think was indicative of a move away from that concept of a school campus that was initiated by the school committee in years past. Nonetheless, I think that, you know, my opinion, I... I I don't think it's overly relevant here, but I will offer it. You know, I I think that. There's a, many communities um have schools that are located throughout their communities, um, Fitchburg being one of them. Uh, and and in fact, it it turned out that 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 was a very smart and wise decision for Fitchburg and their unique needs. To move their high school to kind of the outskirts of their city. I don't think Lunenburg is similar in having that desire or need to do that. But I think there's a lot of value in having schools dispersed throughout communities. Um, I think that they tend to create investment in areas, um, you know, around those schools. They typically are. I mean, look at some of the yards when you come towards the schools. There, you guys have some pretty nice looking yards and houses around all the schools, I mean, for the most part. So I think they do trigger a a higher level of investment. They certainly have an impact on property value and a positive trend. Um, I I think that there's a clear need for school ad- additional athletic fields. You know, there was an effort in the town of Shirley, um, this past. Year, um, I believe it was uh this spring or it could have been last spring, in which they wanted to expand uh senior housing. Uh, and add additional units, but there was a question about impact and they needed the additional housing to get above the ten percent threshold to not be subject to forty Bs. There's a question about how it would impact athletic fields and so it failed. I think that though this region of the of this Commonwealth, um, sees student body populations engaging in sports at a much higher percentage. I think I've heard recently forty-eight to fifty-two percent in some cases in this region, um, that's way higher than 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 statewide. Uh, and so I think there's a need for athletic fields. I think there's a lot of value if we think of a campus of if that was an additional field. That could be utilized for school athletics. I know there's a lot of competition already for utilizing some of these athletic fields. I think that that could be a great field and it maintains. That concept of a school campus, um, that that you kind of spoke to. Um, I I think that Turkey Hill is is on the outskirts of the parcel. Um, I think that there's a need, we are, when we look at what TC Passios is currently being used for or was being used for, since it was vacated as a school. The before-school and after-school program, um, it was used for the food pantry. Um, it was used at one point for uh a room for uh prom dresses, so that way students can get prom dresses. Uh, we have, you know, voting equipment that's in there with the packed studios in there. So there's a clear need to have these spaces for the community. You know, when you start talking about buildings, you know. Four years ago, the cost to renovate a building, you were talking three hundred and three to three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Now you're talking close to five hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So when you start talking about premium spaces that are underutilized during the day at a high cost to the taxpayer. It's really challenging to get the voter to agree to that because of the price tag that it adds.
Is that a new build cost or is that a renovation?
That's a renovation cost, which is pretty close to the new bill cost.
Yes.
Um, and so when you look at Turkey Hill, and in my opinion, and I know I've said this and certainly not to be disparaging to the school committee, but just about our focus. Is that, you know, we struggled to to figure out the repurposing of of old schools. We struggled it with it at the old primary school. We struggled with it at TC Passios. I don't want to struggle with it at Turkey Hill. And so, you know, if buildings uh are maintained, uh, when Turkey Hill was turned over to the parent company's select board, the roof at that point was about thirty-eight years old. Um, it's just gotten old, you know, so when you have water filtration in a building with asbestos like TC Passios. And when that asbestos becomes friable, friable and airborne and it starts, it becomes brittle and damaged. That's when the vessel thelioma kicks in and all that other dangerous stuff. Uh, and so maintaining building envelopes at a minimum. Uh, is so critical to building future use. And so. My opinion is that I I have full confidence that the school committee, with all of your expertise, will turn it within the best interest of the student body population and I expect you support it.
Mr. Beadwood?
Uh, so a couple of comments. Um, first of all, thank you. Um, I I can't think of anything you said tonight that I disagree with, which is unusual.
That is, that is.
Um, but it it strikes me that. When you and I first really got to know each other was three years ago in the run-up to the special town meeting vote where. The couple of different options failed for the um, for the TC Passios property. Um, and, you know, a a lot has transpired over that period of time. Um, but not a lot has transpired in terms of making decisions and moving forward. And I really believe, as Carol has said many times, we've got to move the ball forward. We've got to advance the ball. And I think that, you know, the the plan that your committee is pursuing right now. Is the the closest thing that I've seen or heard to a the possibility of success that I've heard. Since my mother served on that committee in the nineteen eighties. Um, and we referred, my parents would refer to it at the time as the musical chairs committee because it, you know, I have nicknames for other committees in town. But that was the musical chairs committee because there was no real plan to do anything other than move things around, right?
Yeah.
Um, and this is the most serious plan we've had, by far, in probably fifty years. And I say that as though it's fifty-two years old. Um, so so I I'm, I'm in support of this. Uh, I think we've got to move the ball forward. That being said, um, I do worry about. The economic conditions that we are in as a town and the timing of this. Um, I think at last night's select board meeting, the interim town manager said that. The initial quotes for health insurance this year are between twelve and fifteen percent.
That's correct.
Um, which last year, we went off the rails over a nine percent uh uh estimate at this point in the in the process. Um, we, you know, despite the best efforts of everybody. The the special budget committee has not put us on a plan thus far. That says this is how we operate in a sustainable envelope, right? And so in my mind, we are gonna have a serious budget problem, just from an operating budget standpoint, going into. Yet another budget year this year, uh, through nobody's fault. But the timing is gonna be really tough. I think you heard last night that. Um, the average tax bill from last year to this year is up about five hundred dollars.
Four hundred and twenty-seven.
Okay, so, um, these are serious numbers. And this proposal is going to add serious numbers to already serious numbers. So I just. I think we need to be very clear-eyed about this, that this is not a slam dunk, even though it's, in my opinion, a very smart plan. Um, it's still money, uh, in a in a period that money is not, um, is not quite as available. As it was just a couple of years ago. Um, so anyway, tho- those are my thoughts. I think we all just need to be very clear-eyed about that. Um, the other thing that I just, and I didn't expect the conversation to go down the path of what do we do for an elementary school? In the out years, I I agree with your approach entirely. Um, I grew up on this campus. Um, but I can tell you that I may have been able to take advantage of more opportunities in elementary school. Had my school been down the street in the Whalen District, uh, from my house on Pleasant Street, because both of my parents worked and I had to take the bus back and forth to school every day. That was the only option. I I think we should put elementary schools where the kids are, and there's a lot of kids in the Whalen District. Um, so anyway, just my two cents, but I think those are decisions for probably a school committee after my departure, uh, uh, but we'll see. Thank you very much, though, Michael.
Mr. Puzowski?
Um, alright, through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Skelberini. In between nineteen fifty-six and nineteen fifty-nine, the Lunenburg School Committee came up, presented with and tried to get built. An elementary on the West Street Parcel. Called Brookside Elementary. They had some really nice printed material. They had really great plans. They were very good at marketing back then and their, the way they presented material. Um, ultimately, they decided not to go forward with it and a lot of their discussions, the school committee's discussions are so weirdly pertinent today. Um, they discussed the busing causes, the busing costs, um, and I did the inflation math math. We were paying about the same for busing.
Son of a.
I know, I don't mind. It, like, we talk about busing going up, but actually it's it's roughly the same. I think it was seven eighty-eight K a bus. Roughly back then, but there were a lot less kids on the bus. Um, so. Part of the reason they decided not to build them in Whalen was because of the population density, because the role in Massachusetts.
Oh, the mile.
Was a mile and a half, and they said we wouldn't have to bus them, so we probably wouldn't end up busing them because we. Or future school committees to save money would would decide not to bus them. And they would have to walk to school and we would have a huge dense population of young children walking to school by themselves. In an area without sidewalks, and the town didn't seem interested in developing sidewalks. And the towns, there has still not been sidewalks. It's nineteen fifty-six, nineteen fifty-nine discussions, we still don't have sidewalks. So that was one of the large reasons. And the other had to do with the logistics of buses going to multiple places. Um, and the saving money on that, and they wanted to keep one area in the center of town. Um, and that was a big reason, and the parcel was a little bit wet. Uh, so it was really interesting because a lot of their issues, like they were discussing the same stuff we did. They were complaining about late meetings. Uh, it was a little, nothing changes. Um, so that was part of why they didn't do the Brookside. I am, we can, we'll definitely have to talk about it in the future someday, many years. May- maybe from now, but um, I think logistically having one campus in the center, and I'm saying this, my children will be grown by the time, that's an issue. But going from one school to the other, racing across town to get there in time, it's difficult. It adds a lot of extra traffic to the roads. It adds a lot of backup. We've got people turning to get there. It just, it makes it a little more difficult as opposed to just. One area for pickup. And we use multiple buildings. Was it last year when we had the extreme heat wave and we had some kids from Turkey Hill? Go use the air conditioning at the middle high school, which was a great solution we could do because we're so close by. Where there was a fire alarm and they just went and used the fields next door. It was. Or kids from the high school come and pick their siblings up from the school. So I have a lot of reasons why I like the campus thing. Um. Let me get my notes. I can't read my own handwriting. Um, so I've watched the plans evolve for the center of town. Over the years and I'm really happy with the direction it's gone in. Uh, you seem to address a lot of the issues. I'm very happy that we're focusing on saving the buildings in the center of town. Um, ACE in the basement seems a little, that's kind of, that's a, it's an important program for us and I'm not sure. How much we're looking at renovating, like how much focus is gonna be on renovating Ritter versus how much money is gonna go into the new wing? For town offices, because the way it is now, it's, that's, that would not be suitable.
So, um, I I would actively disagree with you on that one, Ms. Puzowski. I think that a location that's suitable for staff who perform work for us. Uh, which in that case is the Veterans Affairs Officer, it is our Facility Director, I think is also suitable for children, not not necessarily. Because I know that there's different school needs. I I get that. But I think that, you know, space that we provide for our staff, uh, if it's substandard for them. Then it likely follows that it's substandard for children, right? But I think that if it's standard enough for them, then we're talking about adults. I I generally am of the opinion, uh, that it is standard for them too. Nonetheless, you know, I think it's a partial basement. Um, it is not a fully submerged basement, so it is a partial basement. There are windows. Um, and I think that the space could very well be adequate. I think the alternative. Um, of of not utilizing it, uh, and and going back in time, you know, that was where a lot of the uh. Young adult literature was when it was a library. Uh, so historically, it was where the kids were. Um, and so I think that, uh, you know, the building hasn't changed substantially from that time to now. So I'm just, I'm of the opinion that all space, um, can be properly, um, ventilated and properly conditioned to be suitable for all age groups. Um, with a proper planning. And so I think that the, what we're expecting here is we want to meet the existing energy code. Um, that is a standard. So, you know, I, what I would expect is that the habitability, habitability of the. Partial underground space will be no different than the habitability of the rest of the spaces that are created for everyone else. Uh, that's my expectation at least going into it. As far as cost, you know, we had a meeting this evening where we interviewed with a design firm. Uh, what we're working on over the next several months, culminating with a presentation on February the fourth to the select board, is renderings. Uh, is getting, is taking all of these concepts and creating the renderings because people need to see what things will look like. Because I can conceptualize, you know, my profession in my head, right? But for most people, it has to be visual. They have to see something. And so I think that what we're gonna be, the work we're gonna be engaged in over these. Coming months is conceptualizing that. You will see us interact with this board again. You will see us interact with the superintendent to say, this is what we think. What do you think? Uh, this is a collaborative process. Um, and I think that if if there are changes at the school committee or superintendent wants to make in our preliminary plans as we go through this. Over the next uh several months, then we'll we'll make those changes. But I I don't off the cuff have a reservation about being able to transform. Um, um, what historically was adolescent space uh to be young adult space. I don't, I don't have a reservation there.
Is it going to be a drastic renovation or cosmetic or is it going to be a large? Redoing of the entire footprint of the building?
Yeah, so the footprint's gonna remain the same. The footprint won't change. Uh, what what you should expect is it's, I wouldn't say full gut. But pretty close to what is a full gut, that you have to get back to.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to put in, I mean, wh- what the building is going to need is new wiring. It's gonna need new plumbing. It's gonna need new HVAC. So all building systems will have to get replaced. That means you need to get into the walls, walls that weren't created to house most of this stuff. And so there's going to be a substantial effort. I mean, I don't want to say full gut, because maybe certain spaces during the exploratory work may not need. That full gut, I don't know the specifics of the renovation that is currently the planning area, uh, and and how much that area's gonna need. Um, but it's gonna be a significant renovation uh to the building that, and I would say something quite similar in Town Hall. On the first floor, it will be a significant uh renovation.
Okay, and accessibility, is it gonna keep the same style? Because the current layout of that Ritter Building there, it's multi-tiered. I didn't know that about the Carnegie Library. That's very interesting. Um, so it's it's multi-tiered. Is it gonna keep the same style of elevators? With the sort of built-in, uh, smaller elevators or?
Yeah, you know, we have to discuss that with our engineering team. Uh, I think generally, generally speaking, you know, the concept that we come up with and we think of accessibility of buildings. Is that everyone deserves a dignity of walking in the front door. Um, and so what has already been approved for Ritter Building unrelated to this project is changing the accessibility of the front entrance and making it accessible. So that everyone has a dignity of coming in the front door. That's already a product that's in the works. Um, and so what I would realistically expect. Is that, is that the primary door is going to be the same door utilized for all people, regardless of their mobility needs. And that will, should be true for Town Hall, should be true for Ritter Building, uh, and should be true for 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 the new Town Hall.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm I'm happy about Town Hall, going back to its sort of original purpose as a meeting house, as a meeting space. Uh, space is at a premium in this town. When Andrews Hall was sold, the community lost a lot. My girl scout troop used to meet at Andrews Hall. Um, we we lost a meeting space in the center of town that the girls could walk to after school to meet. Um, it it was a loss of resources and it would be, it would be fantastic. There was a meeting space there. There's a real need for it. The cultural council, when we were planning the arts festival, we used to have a real problem finding meeting space. There were a couple of meetings we actually had in the children's room at the library in the tiny chairs. For a town meeting, uh, because that was the only space available. So there is a real need for additional meeting space in town. So that sounds fantastic. Um, and then I I wrote under fifteen million and then I just wrote the word how.
Square footage. So, I mean, it's it's, it, you kind of, some of this is formulaic, um, in the sense of, you know, you calculate, you know, Town Hall roughly six thousand. Um, I'm gonna be off in some of these numbers, plus or minus five hundred square feet. Um, you know, when we talk about a building, I think it's fifty-five or sixty-five, somewhere in that range, and we're talking annex four to five thousand-ish. I mean, these numbers are gonna go up. Um, but, you know, if you just pull up a quick calculator, um, and you can, you know, do this exercise with me, but if you kind of assume. That we're roughly talking about fifteen thousand square feet and you multiply that by a high estimate of six hundred bucks. Does anyone have a calculator to tell me what that math comes out to? Fifteen thousand square feet times six hundred bucks.
Are we adding square footage to town offices?
We're adding.
Okay.
Nine million.
Nine million.
How much square footage are we adding?
Roughly four to five thousand square feet. So, I mean, we're currently working with twelve thousand between the two roughly, and we're looking at adding another four-ish in that range. So again, I mean, I think from a formulaic perspective, um, you know, we're not seeing costs at six hundred dollars a square foot right now. But if we assume that we are, and we assume that the square footage is gonna land somewhere around fifteen thousand. You know, just the formulas say we're gonna be about nine million. I'm, you know, but this is also some of those things that happen during the planning process where. You know, you start putting in marble floors, your cost goes to the roof. Um, you know, some of these are design elements that that you can plan for, um, and some things cost more. Um, you know, we're not talking. Um, you know, we're not talking about, uh, a new Town Hall with, uh, with, um, Slate Root, for example. I mean, that's a, that's cost prohibitive. Um, and so when you start being economical in some of the decision-making and long-term durable materials, uh, I think from a formal perspective, we can get there.
Yeah, keeping the Ritter Building lets us maintain the, um, architectural history and elegance of an antique building without having to build something impressive.
I agree.
So that's a good. And, uh, the other thing was, this is so minor, can you put bathrooms off a foyer so it can be unlocked for community events, like off an entrance? In, in addition. Because things like the farmer's market, if there needs to be a bathroom unlocked, that way you would not have to unlock all of Town Hall, you could have someone just unlock a bathroom.
I think that that's something we can bring up in conversation as we kinda conceptualize this. Um, you know, one of, one of the benefits is, you know, this, one of the things about the center of town is that parking can be located within a half a mile, doesn't need to be on the parcel or, or immediately adjacent to the parcel.
That's the APDCs? Or is that the zoning?
It's the zoning, in that district. Um, it, it, there's kinda two things happening. It's an overlay district, then there's also a preservation happening. So when we look at the Thirty Schools Street parcel, this is where we envision a lot of this parking occurring at. Um, something that I've tasked to, um, the, uh, TJ, uh, who's kind of spearheads the T-ball team, is I, I've asked him, you know, we know that we're gonna cut into some of that green space that was the former, um, primary school to, to account for parking calculations. So we know that that's gonna be needed. Um, but I think one of the requests I had to them was, you know, we don't wanna, again, nothing happens without the support of of parents and the school committee. Uh, so one of the requests was, you know, let, let me know how much square footage you need to keep running T-ball. And that way, if we take away some of it, we, you know, there's a kind of cliff back there, we can do some fill and replicate. I'm not saying it's gonna be a smooth field, and I'm not saying convert it, and I am not at all in favor of converting it into a playing field. But I think that a green space that's located there, which the town already supports, um, that can be used for multiple things, including T-ball, I think is critical for products like this moving forward, because you preserve for the people using the spaces their, their use. And you also provide an opportunity for the people who live in apartments, who don't live in the single-family homes, which isn't a big chunk of Lunenburg, but is a growing amount of people in Lunenburg. You provide an opportunity when they wanna have family reunions or family get-togethers, you know, little cookouts, and you also give a space for that. So I think that there's a lot of functionality in, in the fact that we do have that Thirty Schools Street block that we can utilize.
So what is your timeline for bringing things forward? Because we have, as you know, the Turkey Hill study is out. It is happening right now. We're not getting those results until April. And then we're gonna need time to look at them and talk about them, so we're not gonna be able to make decisions for a while.
I think these are unrelated. I mean, they're related, but they're not, they're not connected in terms of making a decision for this.
But I just offered to, to the committee that along the way, there are going to be routine, regular updates as they move through this process, so you will have some insight along the way up until April? It's not as if in April you're gonna see everything for the first time. You, you'll have a sense of, of how things are shaping up along the way.
Yeah, I guess this is, then that would be, that's the next step after the municipal design. So what's?
The spring. The answer is the spring.
Town meeting in the spring?
Correct. You know, and, and to Peter's point, I don't disagree. I mean, it's hard to go to a taxpayer in, in one year and say, I need a million dollars for an override, two hundred dollars extra to a household. I don't know how the math actually shaped out, but I thought it was somewhere around two hundred bucks. Uh, and it wasn't quite a million, it was a little less. Um, but you know, it's hard to do that, it's hard to go to the town and say, oh, and by the way, we need, you know, we know your taxes is one of four hundred twenty-seven dollars, but by the way, you know, you know, add another two hundred bucks for the next twenty years. Oh, and by the way, we know that, um, there might be another override coming. So we know that these are questions that, that the voters have to decide on. You know, the, the thing with buildings is they will never cost less than they cost today. Um, and that's, that's just reality, that's, that's true for everything. I mean, something I, I say to, I say to people when they talk about money is, would you buy your house at the value today? Would you buy your house at its value today, versus when you, maybe five years ago, maybe ten years, or whenever you bought it, but would you buy your house at its value today? I think most people would say, I either A, can't afford it, uh, or two, straight out, no. And I think that, that concept trickles, trickles over to government as well. That, you know, delaying decisions on property and buildings does not decrease cost, and it sure doesn't decrease need. Um, so sometimes we have to make these tough decisions. And I think that as a community, if you put forward a, a, a plan that's been vetted, uh, that has had a lot of interest from key stakeholders, that's been well communicated, the voters can make that hard decision. If the answer is no, the answer is no. You know, you, you can try again, or you accept that, we have what we have, that's not functional. Um, I would expect that we probably would try again. Um, but, you know, I, I think that, I trust the voters. I think the voters generally make the right decision. Uh, I, I know there's not many times when I disagree strongly with the voters, even if I don't agree with an article or what the voters decide, I mean, I generally think the voters make the right choice. So I feel confident that you can come to the voters with a variety of spinning options, and if they say no to all, then they're saying, hey, don't give me five things at once. If they, I mean, you know, these things can be overcome, but, but really, you know, I think we have to also understand the public, you know, a third of our town are seniors, for the most part. Uh, not quite a third, but a little less. Uh, and many people on fixed incomes, many people who retired fifteen years ago cannot reasonably afford to continue to live in this town. Um, and, and, and so they may have an interest in voting no. You know, but separately, I think we know that, you know, we all come into this role with a variety of skills and a variety of interests, and separately, something that, you know, and I, I intimated that I've been engaged in some soft conversations about this, but I'll share it here tonight, is, you know, we need more senior housing in town. I am actively working with a developer to come up with a plan for senior housing and starter homes. I think if you, if you tell the people who've lived in town for forty years, here is a viable option for you to downsize and remain in your community, you know, when that person gets their tax will cut in half, they just might be more willing to say yes. And, or, or they can foreseeably agree to something today, that they can understand that they can better afford tomorrow. So I, I think, you know, we all have to do things in unison, we all have to work in, you know, kinda even disparate parts at times. But I think we have to address multi, multiple aspects of the problem, uh, in order to get to the solution here.
Ms. Ashenbaum?
You and I have had this conversation a million times.
A million and one.
Yes, at least, at least, so you know where I am with this. I am gonna use my favorite David Ortiz quote, keep the line moving. This has to get done. My thought exactly was that the longer we wait, the more expensive it becomes. When, um, the plan with all the buildings in the eighties that were all gonna be built, you know, bink, 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 would have been a lot cheaper in the long run than what we ended up doing.
Correct.
So, um, we said that then, but we, it, it didn't work. And I understand that this, this project will add money to people's taxes. I get that. I am one of those senior citizens who retired not fifteen, but ten years ago. I understand that. But I also understand that we can't have all these buildings fall down around us. This is a great plan. I, I, this plan has been vetted a million different ways, and, and I think it really should go forward. And as you have said, if the voters decide this is not the time, we can't afford it, we're not gonna do it, then so be it. But at town meeting, I will say the same thing. The longer we wait, the more expensive this will get. And all these buildings will fall down, and we can't have that. So, um.
And we've gotta govern our town, and we've gotta give people a place to work where they wanna work, you know, I mean, this is all part of our ability to, to hire and retain
And retain people.
Good talent, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to be at the bottom of the barrel when it comes to talent, or not be able to, you know, because our space is disgusting, you know, like this is all part of running of an effective government.
I would agree, and, and I think that, um, the discussion on Turkey Hill is for another school committee, but it, we will move on that. And you and I have also talked about how this has to move cooperatively, and then we'll get it all done.
This is the most palatable comprehensive plan that I've seen my entire lifetime living here. This is, I think, the closest we've gotten.
Well, I, I don't have Peter's thirty, uh, fifty years, but I have thirty-five years in town, and this makes the most sense to me out of anything.
Thing I can think of in terms of like a an open and shut case, and it wasn't, was when we decided to build the Public Safety Building, and we knew we were gonna tear down the old one when we built the new one, right? We had a boat yard in the front yard that we didn't resolve, but, but, you know, I mean, but, but at least we had a, an operational plan, you know, and, and, um, that, that's the closest thing, right? I mean, even the library, which I think, you know, in, I, I opposed it at the time, partially because, partially because there wasn't a plan for the, for the Ritter at the time. Nobody was going to put a dollar value on
How to do that.
The, the plan for the Ritter and what was going to happen with it, and I think everybody knew what was gonna happen with it, but nobody wanted to say it. And I think, you know, over time, we've kinda learned our lesson that we have to tell the whole story, right?
That building was newly abandoned when I moved to town.
Yeah, it wasn't abandoned long, because everybody kinda knew where it was going, right?
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. I wanna thank the school committee members for all their insightful questions and comments. Uh, I think, hopefully, uh, you can take a lot back to your committee or our committee. Uh, and also I think, uh, yeah, we are moving in the right direction, and, um, I think it's keeping the ball moving, but also keeping that communication open so the public knows and other committees know, so. Thank you for reaching out to attend our meetings, and I appreciate you coming and giving the feedback and giving us a lot of the backstory too.
I wanna thank you as well, and thank the members of the Municipal Building Design Committee, current and former. I think that Mr. Beardmore knows how I mentally process, it's something I need to argue a bit. Uh, and Peter has been that soundboard to kinda help work through a lot of these uh, iterations and challenges, uh, while he was serving on, on the committee previously, and, and again, the members, I think, were blessed with a good membership that is interested in, in, in really representing the committees and boards that they do represent, and doing what's in the best, in the best interest of the town. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Michael.
Good evening.
All right, next item on the agenda is new business, we have a discussion on student competency determinations.
Yes, we thought that we would, um, just give the committee an update on the impact of the ballot, uh, vote relative to elimination of the MCAS test for high school graduation requirement. Um, Dr. Bukis is with us tonight, you know, she gave you an overview. Essentially, at this point, we're just defaulting to our own, um, school committee's set requirements for graduation. Um, so there's, there's really no action that the committee needs to take. You know, we are awaiting some additional guidance from the state. As an example, um, students needed to have a certain, uh, performance level on the MCAS exam to be eligible for, um, scholarships, as an example. Um, so we don't know exactly what the plans are relative to that. There may be no change, quite honestly, because they're still going to give the MCAS test. Um, it just won't count, um, as a graduation requirement. Um, but again, Dr. Bukis is here, if you, if you had any questions relative to, um, the impact of that vote.
Mr. Skolger?
So if they don't count, can the kids opt out of doing them?
Opting out is not an option.
Okay.
It never has been.
So, but I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, is it, are we going to adopt as the school committee, are we going to adopt a requirement that they do the MCAS?
We don't have that, um, power. Uh, that's a, the state, every state
Yeah.
must, for the federal government, um, do an assessment of the students. And in Massachusetts, MCAS is our assessment. Um, so that's why we still have to give the assessment, because that's for a federal requirement. The, at the time, um, the state just determined that in addition to giving this assessment to meet a, a federal requirement, we are also, as a state, going to say that a certain passing score is required for all high school students to earn their high school diploma. That is the piece that has been removed.
So there's no change in anything other than the MCAS being tied to graduation?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Beardmore?
I have a couple of questions. First, do we, um, do we include MCAS scores as part of our students', uh, transcripts?
You know, I was just looking at transcripts the last couple of days, as a matter of fact, and I don't believe that the MCAS scores are on, uh, a high school transcript. But I could be wrong, I can go back and double check that and let you know.
Yeah, I would doubt that.
I don't, I don't believe that the score is on the, on the transcript.
Ms. Bukis?
I don't think that's difficult to have that as part of the high school transcript. We can double check.
My, and I'm, I'm I voted against this measure, I think it was a bad decision, I think it's a bad law. I think that we need aside from having a standard for which we want students to strive to attain, I think that there is a certain benefit to those of us who are responsible for the performance of our schools know that these tests are taken with an incentive, that everybody is doing their level best uh, to, to achieve. And you are measuring and comparing from year to year against the level best. I work in sales and marketing, and I know when I look at our revenue numbers, that our sales, you know, it if, if we're up or down over quarter or years, it's largely not because our salespeople aren't trying hard enough, it's because I'm not enabling them well enough, or there's something wrong with our go-to-market, because our salespeople are trying to sell, they're trying to make money. And, and I kind of view that same incentive a- as, you know, something that we can rely upon when we look at our MCAS scores. All of that being said, the voters have spoken, and that incentive is gone. To whatever extent that we can do locally, to re-instill some sort of incentive, to have a measurement that is reliable for us, um, to ensure that we are doing our best, I, I think we should pursue that. And one possible angle is including MCAS scores on a transcript. Um, because then it becomes visible to anybody who looks at that transcript, uh, to include higher education and whatnot. So I'd, I'd like to ask that that's something that we potentially investigate. I don't know if it's legal, I, I'd, I'd like to know.
I think the, what, what you could do, um, and I'm not saying I agree with it, but I think you could make MCAS a Lunenburg requirement to graduate. You can make, what they're saying, from what I got from the, the passing of this vote, was that the schools now decide, not the state. So that is an option.
I, that was not my interpretation.
That was not.
I would rather see.
But I would love to hear an attorney's opinion on that.
Yeah. That's gonna be a lawyer thing.
Pleasant company, I would.
That seems a little going around the.
Um, and I don't, it's not my intent to subvert the will of the voters of Massachusetts, right? But I do think that as policymakers for Lunenburg, we do have the ability to say, okay, this is a little bit different approach, because we do believe there's a benefit of an incentive.
Why? Because you want the data?
I want the data. I think the data benefits everybody. I think, you know, in, in.
So I would say on that.
I want reliable data.
We are, we are gonna get the data, they are gonna take the MCAS, and we've seen it from third grade to eighth grade, that those students do not need to pass the MCAS to move on to the next grade, or to graduate, that those students are taking it, and suddenly the tenth graders are not gonna care. I think as long as we continue that testing procedure that we do through, for third through eighth graders, that it is an important test, that we're gonna take it serious, then we'll get the same data from the tenth graders that we do from the third to eighth graders.
Yeah, and I know you spend a lot more time with tenth graders than I do, but I do not have the same level of confidence in, in, but, but maybe, I don't, I don't.
Extra barriers to graduation on children of the voters.
As a parent of a tenth grader, I just am a little bit, a little bit more skeptical.
I, I would argue very heavily against putting extra barriers to graduation, that the voters of the state of Massachusetts voted to remove.
That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting we annotate it, and we annotate a score on a transcript. And I am curious about, can we add additional requirements?
Those are the students' scores, not ours, I mean.
Both, maybe. You know, I'm not, I'm not, I would look at all options here, right? Um, anyway, I think it, I think it deserves a look.
I'm just not sure what the benefit is. I mean, just because you want the data doesn't mean the students owe it to us.
I, I, I tend to agree with Peter, and I also think that if, if we could, we should put something back in place, because if they know that it doesn't count, the chance that we get their best efforts is probably not high. And if we don't get their best efforts, then the data we get is not as useful. And since all we can do is track them, uh, at the school committee level, all we can do as an oversight body is to review the data, then having better data will give us better information about what to do next. If we don't have that data, I, I, you know, like, I am a firm, firm believer that more data, more accurate data will give us better results. And I don't really see anything about putting, like, if we can do Brian's thing and make it a requirement, they already had it as a requirement.
It's not my thing.
Okay, if we could, if we could, if we could further that idea, then, you know, it, it's, and I, I hear you saying about the, the will of the voter, but if it's, if it's not illegal, then the voters didn't talk about it.
But, so, from my, my perspective as a teacher, I think it comes back to local assessments. We can get data from local assessments. Students should be evaluated and assessed based off of the assessments that they're taking in the classes, that they're taking. They should be graduating based off of the, the, the credits that they're earning in English and math, the social studies and world language, and, and getting those credits. I, I don't think the MCAS data is an all-encompassing data. We get data, I think, from a lot of different assessments.
I, I agree exactly with that, and I think the, the students don't owe us that data. They, we owe them the education, they have to fulfill the requirements, the four English credits, the three math credits that they have to pass, those are the graduation requirements we have for them. They have to pass those classes and do their best. It's almost punitive to, to find ways to force them to do their best on a test, because we want data that reflects more accurately. If you really want that, pay them to do it or something, find the money for that, because it seems, it, it just seems like you want the data, so we're gonna force them to do their best. And that's, I don't think that's how education's supposed to work.
I think as we sit here, I think as we will sit here, in a little less than a year from now, and look at our MCAS scores from this year, we will find two things. Number one, I predict they will not be as good
Correct.
as they were in the past year. That's prediction number one. Prediction number two is not a prediction, it's really a, it's really a truth. We cannot tie that to the previous 15 years of data that we have, and, and do any reliable trend analysis and make any decisions based on that.
We don't have 15 years of data.
Sure we do.
We have 20, it's, they redid the test in 2019, they didn't take the test in 2020. 2021 was a delayed test.
Reduced version of the test.
So, honestly, we have 2019, 2022, 23, and then 24.
Massachusetts put in the MCAS nearly 20 years ago as a result of the No Child Left Behind law.
2003.
And it became a requirement
Yes, but the.
at that time. There is 20 years of data. Now, the ta, the test may have changed.
The data is different.
But, and there are, there are changes in the data, but the reality is, is that we've been doing it this way for two decades, and now we're not. And so, our approach to data will now need to change as a result of that. Particularly with respect to performance in the 8th grade, 9th grade, and 10th grade. Right, it may not, it may have no bearing, and it probably won't have any bearing on the primary school or elementary school, but it will have a bearing in our ability to determine our effectiveness in the middle and high school.
Ms. Ashambo?
I, I would say, the educator in me says that, I agree, the numbers are not gonna jive. That, it, it's not gonna jive. But, you have entrusted the educators, and we have a Department of Teaching and Learning, which makes a huge difference. And they can find ways to assess what they are teaching that is more in the moment, makes more sense to the kids, because it works with the units they're being taught and what they're learning. It's more organic, let's say, than sitting in a high-stakes situation. Now, the, the data's gonna be different, but I believe that there are ways to get, not the same data, but data to tell you if we are, um, helping our students to achieve the standards the way we should be. Other standards being taught, which was the initial reason for the MCAS, to make sure that the standards presented by the Department of Education were actually being taught. That was the original purpose, it was not a graduation department, um, requirement initially. So, I believe that we can do that with, whether it's groups of communities, like, the Central Massachusetts English Department teachers get together, and they come up with some kind of a test that will actually reflect what the kids are learning. I think we can do something very similar. I do.
I, I look forward, I look forward to that being explained to me in a way that I believe it. And, and, and then not, not to say that you're, that I don't wanna believe you, or that I don't believe you, but that I've been listening
I get it.
to exactly what you're saying for the last several months, and the messaging that's coming from the MTA, and I don't believe it. And I say this as somebody who, when I was a high school student, knew how to target the easy-grade teacher. And that, that took, you know, and I was able to do that in college as well, by the way, right?
The world is different now.
And, and, and maybe it is different, I look forward to somebody explaining that to me, right? But, but my, my, my assessment right now is, I think I'm a pretty smart product marketer, and I'm surrounded by a bunch of pretty smart product marketers, and I'm part of a larger marketing department and sales department, and boy, can we convince ourselves we're really good, right? When the sales numbers don't come in, our CEO says, well, y'all think you're smart, but what about the results? Right? And what you just described to me is a bunch of people who are like me telling each other that they're good marketers. And I, I just, I'm, I'm having a really hard time resolving that.
Mr. Skolbrin?
So, I, I'm listening to what Carol said, and what Laura said, and what Peter said, and I think that I wanna change what I said before, I think I'm wrong. And I think that's a credit to the fact that everybody here really cares and thinks reasonably. I do not think that the only way to get this information is to have a test. I think if you look at other places where people are evaluated on a massive scale, they have developed systems, aside from a test, that are really, really effective. And one of the ways that I'm thinking of is, and this sounds strange, but the way they evaluate baseball players. The, the fact that you have essentially a portfolio model, like you do in an art school, where you, you know, you do your thing in front of experts, and a number of times, in front of a number of different experts, and then they create a system of evaluating you, uh, it's the, it's like a 20 to 80 scale, and it is really effective. They don't always pick, like, you know, if you go back and you look at Greg Maddox's scouting reports, they were terrible, and those people should all be fired. But there were people who evaluated him, and everybody else that makes it to the majors, it's like, these guys are really good. And by and large, every single person who has the ability to play Major League Baseball, with maybe like a handful of examples worldwide, is in Major League Baseball. And the same thing is true with other athletics and how they evaluate people. So I do think that there are other models besides a test. And I think that one of the concerns that people had was teaching the test, I think that's a legitimate concern. So I do agree. The, the thing about whether or not they should be evaluated, or whether or not there should be a high stakes thing, I took a test, it was a pass/fail test, and if I failed, I was going to be crushed by a mountain of debt, and it was called the bar exam. So like, whether we do it here, or we do it someplace else, or they do it some other time in their life, eventually kids are gonna have to be tested in a high stakes way, and if they can't do that, then they're not gonna be functional adults. So they're just gonna have to deal with it. The other thing that I think about, like, do they owe us the data? Like, I don't think they owe us anything, but our job is to go get it, and if we can go get it by incentivizing them to, shh, you know, really engage and participate with whatever form of evaluation we have, then I think we will do better. I think that not having any data, or having data that is skewed because they're like, eh, this doesn't count anymore, I think that that's, that's worse than, in some ways, that's worse than no data, because we think it's legitimate, and it's clearly not. So like, whatever mechanism we develop, whether it's put it on the transcript, or some other method of evaluating them, I think we need to have a, a method of evaluating them that is high stakes, so that we can get a realistic assessment. I mean, if you went to the hospital, and you're like, I'm just gonna like fib to the doctor, that doesn't help anybody. Or if you go to the hospital and you're like, eh, you don't need to tell me the whole truth, then like you have a kid who's, you know, overdoses on drugs, and tells the doctor it was a stomach flu, and like, he doesn't get treated. And so things happen later on. We have to have a way of making sure that they're putting forth best efforts in whatever method we use to evaluate them, because that's the only way we can get insights into how we're doing. And if we don't have that, or we have some half-measure, like what they're proposing now, then I think Peter's right, we're all just gonna be patting ourselves on the back, being like, they do great. And then, you know, you see the graduation rate slip, you see the acceptance to top-tier schools slip, and then, you know, we don't know why. The last point I will make is about the schools. They're all doing this anyway, right? Like, they have metrics, they have methods of sorting through data, and they evaluate people based on data, right? Like, they say, like, you know, I, I know that when, when I was in law school, one of the people, that was one of my teachers, was at the admissions office at Harvard Law School, and she described how they did, and it was all, you know, like, secret, but some of the things that were open, because they were part of the litigation, she described how they did it. And, you know, like, they would assign each essay to 10 readers or five readers, and they would give them a score of like, one to four, with one being not great, and four being the best. And they would make sure that all of the tests and all of the scores distributed fell within a range, so that there wasn't, everybody got a four. You know, the kids are going to have to do this anyway, and if we don't start inculcating them into this method of like, do your best, really try, you're being evaluated. When they go on to college, they're not gonna score as well, they're not gonna get as good as schools, and even if they do get into those schools, they won't do as well. We have to have some way of saying, you need to take this seriously, we're using this to evaluate you, whatever it is. But I, I think you guys have.
They're still taking tests, like, they're still testing school, they're still taking finals.
The test in school and the finals aren't the same, because we don't have a way of universalizing that data, right?
Yeah, but they're still getting that pressure of learning to take tests.
That's, right, but like, I, I think that like, what we need is, we need some way to say, this data is applicable beyond, you know, like.
Beyond Lunenburg.
Right. And, and, you know, the MCAS did that, and maybe it wasn't a perfect way to do that, but it allowed people to have an apples-to-apples comparison. I mean, I think about my law school versus law schools that other people went to. Like, I, when I was at the Public Defender, I hired one of the most brilliant people I've ever met to be a lawyer at the Public Defender, and she went to Yale, she had, you know, Supreme Court justices' teacher class, and then I realized that they didn't have grades, right? Like, it was a pass/fail. So I think that like, saying that our, our in-school tests provide that same level of rigor and examination in a way that's useful for us. Like, I think that like, you know, I'm thinking of my son in Mr. Esterbrooke's class. His tests are really great to get at whether or not they understand that material. But how, how you can extrapolate from those kind of tests to like statewide performances, or even nationwide performances, as a school committee, I don't know how you do that in a meaningful way. Like, I just don't know how we can take, you know, in-class tests and say, these are metrics that we should be using, because like, you know, not everybody teaches the same material, not every teacher teaches the same way. But we need to have some standardized method of evaluation that requires the students to address it with some rigor, like real rigor, they need to feel it. And, you know, by saying it was tied to graduation, the MCAS did that, we got rid of it, and whether or not there's another approach, we've gotta find something, or we're gonna be lost. I think it is a dire problem without a solution. I think this is one of those things where the voters blew up the dam and didn't realize the water was coming. Cause like, now what do we do?
So I would, I would say, I think, a lot of it, especially as a teacher, I think we're gonna have, a lot of teachers have their local assessments, whether they're common assessments or not, to assess the students on those objectives. But also, I think you look, you still have the high-stake testings of either SATs, or even AP. Not every student takes AP classes, but they're still getting those rigorous AP scores, AP testing, and we're gonna get those AP results as well. Um, but I think what it really comes down to is, I think we're gonna, as a, as a school, we're gonna have to decide what the, the graduation requirements will be for those students, now that they're basically sending it back to the, the schools to decide. So, Dr. Burnham, did you have anything else to add?
There's a lot, a lot, um, of very valid comments that were made, and many of them I agree with. An in-class test is not anything that we can use in a larger comparative way to see how our kids are performing. I think Ms. Ashambo's, um, point around the importance of maintaining a curriculum office, that's where we'll be able to continue to, um, hold a certain level of expectation for, uh, the curriculum that we're, that we're teaching. Um, relative to marketing around this, uh, campaign, um, some of what I heard in the commercials as arguments to eliminate this, I, I, I take exception. What? Some of the commercials made it sound like, we'll get rid of this, and teachers can go back to teaching what they would like to teach, the way they would like to teach it, and not teach to the test. Teaching to the test is when you learn strategies, how to approach and get the best score you can on an SAT test, which is different from how you strategize and approach to get the best score on an AP test, or the Miller's analogies test, right? You, you're penalized if you answer incorrectly, so if you're not sure, don't guess, because you'll lose points. You're not penalized for answering incorrectly, go ahead and guess, you might get it right and get your point. That's teaching to the test. Teachers have been asked for the last two decades to teach a curriculum that is aligned with the standards in the content areas that the state has set for that content area for each grade level. That's what they've been asked to teach. The assessment assesses whether or not the kids learned what they were supposed to learn in that content area at that grade level. Teachers, I take exception if any of our teachers are saying that they teach to the test. They should not be teaching to the test. They should be teaching a curriculum designed to align with the standards that the state has outlined for content area at their grade level. That's what they should be teaching, content. There are a lot of challenges that we're gonna look at now, relative to the validity of the data, how do we compare? We'll still know how we compare to the state, because they're still gonna give this assessment.
Yeah, our problems are not unique, like, when we compared our, like, if our 10th grade scores go down, everyone's are going down. It's not like the Lunenburg kids alone figured out they don't need.
But I don't wanna be the district that didn't think of how to incentivize my kid when every other district around me figured it out.
Right.
Right? Because that's where we'll really be in trouble.
But theoretically, if our teachers continue to teach a rigorous, standards-aligned curriculum, and they assess their students along the way as to whether or not they've learned what they've been taught, that's theoretically what they should be assessing with unit assessments in their classroom. They should have a sense along the way, how kids, you know, are, are prepared to perform. Now, might there be kids who report to testing and do the Christmas tree method of filling out their, you know?
I'm familiar with it.
Their bubble sheets. I mean, it's possible, it's possible. But I, I do think it's, it's a conversation around why it's important for the kids, because we have to do this in all grades up through grade eight. Why it's important for you to show what you know. Please, give your best effort, because we look at this information, and we make decisions about you and your, your placement in classes, or if you need added support, right? Like, we, we will continue to want to look at that data for those purposes. And I think when you explain to students why it's important for them to give their best effort, generally speaking, they do.
Yeah.
Right? We found, particularly with the 8th grade, that perhaps the I-Ready scores were not the most accurate reflection, because we saw that their MCAS performance was better than their I-Ready performance. What might have been the factor there? Lots of testing in the eighth grade, test fatigue for sure. But the kids, I believe, believed that the MCAS was a more important measure than the I-Ready assessment.
Oh, sure.
And they maybe didn't give their very best effort on the I-Ready assessment. But they have been giving a pretty good performance with the MCAS test. And it, and I think as long as we as a district, teachers in particular in the classroom conveying that this is still a really important tool to help us make decisions around curriculum, around, you know, placement in courses or placement in additional supports. When the kids know that we're looking at the information and we're using that information in ways that could impact them, I think generally they, they they give their best effort. It's really, I think, gonna be up to us around messaging to help them understand that that it is still an important tool, even if it doesn't count for graduation.
Can you keep us updated on what other districts are doing, though? I mean, like Peter said.
Yeah, I'm sure that there'll be plenty of conversation ongoing. And, um, you know, obviously, the school committee sets and adopts different curriculum at different grade levels. Now, that is changing, we're, we're still going to be moving forward with all the curriculum that's been approved. Again, it 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 really, I think, is gonna come down to messaging, all the way down to the level of classroom.
To be perfectly honest, state legislator sometimes has a really, they like to overturn, not overturn, but find ways around it. So we voted to overturn the, um, MCAS, they might just rename the test.
But you're you're not wrong.
That's possible.
Also, so like I said, they're removing the requirement for graduation and giving it back to the the schools.
They might come up with a new test that is.
But again, the the requirement for graduation, though.
Yeah, the requirement could be put on us, and here, I mean, like, who knows how like, what they could mandate.
They might offer three tests and say, districts pick one of those, and that, now you have to pick a test.
I I don't think they could do that. If you look at Mass General Laws, uh, section, uh, chapter sixty-nine, section one D, which is the part that was struck by the ballot initiative. It said, the part that was struck was as measured by the assess, the assessment instruments described in section one. So they could, I mean, I guess they could change the name or put it in section two. But I I think that by making it tied to assessment instruments, it's gonna be hard to. It it doesn't, I mean, I'm not giving anybody legal advice, but it doesn't say anything about what local school districts could do.
So. Obviously, this is a conversation that will span probably months, if not years. I I'm curious about, and I don't, I don't think this needs an answer now, but I would like some thought around graduate, like, the way we have graduation requirements right now and have had for eons is you take a certain number of classes and those classes are in certain categories and they give you credits. On the transcripts, there is weighting now at Ludenberg High School relative to the level of class that you take. So if you take an honors class or an AP class, there is weighting associated with that that renders a higher grade, I guess. I'm not exactly sure how it works.
GPA points.
Yeah, they're GPA points, but, um, my my question is, is i- is there some sort of calculus that that could be included in graduation requirements, right? That 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 ultimately harnesses the the talents of the of the student that may be strong in math but may be weak in English or something along those lines whereby the student could, could be incentivized to achieve in higher-level classes. Um, so that's just one thought that I have. The other thought that I have is, uh, and I think everybody knows this, I I think that we should not be requiring physical education, uh, in high school. I don't think that it is particularly helpful through most of the spectrum. I think it should be an option, it should be an elective, uh, we should certainly offer it, but I don't think we should require it. I know that there are some state requirements associated with that, but there are also the ability to waive those requirements with respect to varsity athletes. And I've made this request multiple times to the high school administration. Uh, I'm not sure how serious my requests have been taken, but I think that that is an area that I would like to have looked at as well so that we can focus our students on classroom learning.
Your request would be to waive all physical education or just for student athletes?
For student athletes. Well, personally, I think it should be an elective, but the state requires a minimum of physical education, I believe, but it is waivable. But we do not, we have not adopted those waivers in Ludenberg.
Okay. Just wanna clarify on what you were looking for.
Thank you.
But in a perfect world, I would make it off.
All right, I think, uh, the superintendent has some good, uh, feedback on the, uh, student competency determinations.
Dr. Bukas listened to the whole conversation as well, so thank you for being here, Dr. Bukas.
We appreciate it, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is cell phone policy discussion.
Oh, good.
Is another can of.
Something non-controversial.
Short meeting, it's becoming longer.
Yeah.
Mr. Scullbrin?
So, uh, I I asked this to be put on, uh, the agenda, and I asked this to be put on part of our goals for this year. Last year, after the budget, after everybody exiled and with the passing of the budget override, or the the proper two and a half override, more than one parent approached me and said, I think the next thing that you guys should look at is the cell phone policy. And we do have like a couple of different policies that would touch on the cell phone policy. I think that what people were looking for is like, real guidance on this. And so, in trying to get a feel of like how this works, how this works here, how this works elsewhere, what the research said, I met with a couple of district teachers, I met with the union president. Uh, I read a book written by a gentleman named Jonathan Hyde, I listened to a couple of interviews from him. I reached out to people at Edutopia, which I'd talked to before about other things. Um, I reached out to a woman, uh, who has a TikTok account where she's like a teacher talking about, you know, funny things that happened at school. Uh, she provided probably the, I mean, other than the people that, you know, I met face to face, she provided, probably provided the best feedback, even with all the PhDs and famous people. Uh, I talked to a bunch of parents, I talked to students. Um, and it sort of had like two different kinds of poles where all of the concerns gathered around. One of the things that people had said, and one of the issues that's raised in all of the literature on this is whether or not there's like a centralized policy put forth by the school board that administration adheres to, or there's like deference, discretion of the classroom teacher. Another thing that came up in all of these discussions, and I I just wanna lay this out before we start talking so that we have some idea of like what things that people are talking about out there, is, are there different rules for different grades? In talking to the the woman that was a social media, uh, influencer and happened to be a school teacher, her name is Ms. Dugan. She is hilarious, but she talked a lot about how in a big school district, she worked in a big school district and a little school district, and they had different policies. And those policies became really complicated, especially as you went down from high school to all the way down to primary school, like where the transition happens. The other thing that came up a lot in the discussions and the research was people who talked about like absolute zero tolerance policy. Uh, people who talked about having, uh, zero tolerance policy during classroom instruction periods, but not in lunch or recess or study hall. Um, one thing that is mentioned, and I know that there's some grant money available, which is why I'm mentioning it, is a yonder bag, does anybody, like, if you go to like, uh.
Like a Faraday?
It it is a Faraday, I mean, that's essentially what it is, but it's branded. So like, if you go to like, uh, a stand-up comedian, you have to put your phone in a bag and it locks, and it has like a device that holds it locked, and then you can either unlock it by going to this device, or they can send a Wi-Fi signal that'll unlock all of them at once. Some people, uh, talked about different approaches in the classroom. I know that, um, one of the teachers that I talked to, they had a box, and then one had like a back-of-the-door shoe rack. One of the, so like, there were a bunch of different solutions. But over and over again, when I talk to people, the things that came up were, you know, reaching kids where they are sometimes requires or is made much easier by allowing them to use cell phones. And so like, the example that I thought of, that actually the social media person, the the influencer person told me was like, uh, a gentleman named Devon Rodriguez, who's like an artist on TikTok and Instagram. He's like fifty million followers, but he like, does really great artwork, and he does it like in interview format. And, you know, he's done Oprah, and then President Biden, all different kinds of people. You know, he he, it would not come across the same way on a computer or a Chromebook. It doesn't have the same sort of, you know, like vibe, whatever. It it, there are some examples that people have given, and I thought that was a good one. Um, you know, talking to teachers here, a lot of times they would have, uh, things where the kids would be able to do things more easily on their phones, like, uh, uh, one of my sons had a project where they did like video, and they made a video about like some specific topic, and you could have edited on a laptop, but the kids are just much more comfortable doing it on their phones. Uh, so there was some like real pedagogical reasons. There was a lot of concern on the parents' part and on some of the intellectuals' part about interactions during non-classroom time, that if kids had access to phones, every time they were not in instructional periods, that they would just like sit next to each other and text each other instead of actually talking. There were obviously some safety concerns, some parents thought that like, you know, having phones opened their kids up to certain things. And other parents had the exact opposite concern, which was, if I can't reach my kid in in case of an emergency, like their grandmother goes to the hospital or, you know, something like that, I want them to have their phones for that reason. There was also concern on the parents' part, the kids' part, and the teachers' part about concerns for attributing fault in the case of lost, damaged, or stolen items. Um, and then there were the last concern, especially for the younger kids, that some of the parents that I talked to who were parents of younger kids mentioned, was what would happen, um, for devices? So like, there are, I I just realized this, but there are a whole array of devices aimed at younger kids that are not cell phones, but still have the ability to call. Some of them are watches.
Watches.
Yeah, and other devices, um, that don't have the same tracking features and same calling features, but don't have the ability to do like interaction, they're not really screen devices, like the biggest screen would be like an, an Apple Watch. And so, how would those be treated? And, you know, everybody that I talked to had a different idea about how different devices would be treated. But that was like my survey over the past year of trying to gather information about what the common themes were and who said what and why they said it. I don't think that I, like, I would not feel comfortable, like, going to policy subcommittee and drafting a policy without input from everybody here, cause this, literally, people would, not like from person to person, but within a conversation with one person, they would say the exact opposite thing. And it wasn't like they were just like forgetting what they said, they're like, ooh, that's a good point. I didn't, and so like, it was like, where do we go? I I, you know, I think that it's it's a really difficult thing. I think that one of the like common themes that I got from parents was, I don't want my kid glued to the phone, but I wanna have immediate access and be able to track them. And those two things are not mutually compatible. And then from the teachers, I got a sense, and this wasn't just teachers in this district, I talked to teachers in other districts. I talked to this woman, like I said, from Kansas. They were concerned about having a policy that would allow them to say, this is the rule. You don't, like, it's not my decision, it's the school district's decision, or it's the school board's decision. And then having admin back them up. I don't, I don't think we would have that problem here. I think we have a a pretty strong administrative core. We put out a rule, that would be the rule. But that was a concern in a lot of places. You know, we have a smaller district, but like, some of the people that I talked to were teachers in districts that had like, you know, twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand kids. And if you're doing that, and, you know, each teacher has some variability, then the students feel like there are no rules. So those are the issues.
Mr. Beadmore?
I have a number of questions on this. The first is, do we know if our teachers think that cell phones in a student's pocket or in a classroom is detracting from the student's attention or our ability to teach them?
I would say that from the people that I talked to, including and especially the union president, who has sort of a a more, uh, comprehensive overview than I would talking to one people, but talking, that every educator said they were concerned about divided attention.
Okay. I, in my mind, that is the most important metric.
Yes.
More important than my ability to ask my kid if he's got football practice today.
Yes.
And 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 I rely on that almost every day. Cause there's a forgotten uniform or a who knows what, there's always a thing that there needs to be some form of communication. And, but I I think that our ability to execute in the classroom trumps everything. But I, and I I would like to be able to give our teachers the ability to manage that in a way that is more than what they have today. Now, it has to be nuanced, right? I don't think it's Faraday bags when you walk in the school and you open it when you leave. Right? I just don't, the other thing is, is that there's actually a budget implication here, right? Aside from the equipment of what you do with these things if you take them away. But when I was in high school, the office was the messaging department for the school, right? Because they would get the call from me saying, can you ask Ray if he's got his football uniform? You know, like, we we don't need to be doing that today, right? Like, there's no need for us to be in that business anymore. So I think, I I think we should give our teachers whatever policy tools they need to be as effective as they think they can be, but I think whatever it is has to be nuanced, right? And and I'm not exactly sure what that prescription is.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Can students in the middle of high school receive emails outside of the Ludenberg public school's email address? So still, if they have email on their phone.
Yeah, if they got a Gmail account, that's.
Do we not give them Chromebooks during the day?
We do.
They could check email.
So like.
They could check their email.
They can check.
From mom, dad, from home.
So they're not uncontactable during the day?
No.
No.
Like, we, you can email your kid and say, did you remember your?
So you cannot, so I cannot email my kid's Ludenberg school email address. I can email my kid's Gmail account that he has separate from, which he could log into if he wanted to from his Chromebook. But I, but I can't hit.
Okay, that's what I meant.
His student account.
I I do believe that that is true because we have to protect them while they're accessing email. So, pretty much, they can only be in the, in the network.
Okay, that's what I meant, okay.
Good to know. Miss Ashambo?
Um, I I agree, cause I'm a little removed from all of this. But, um, when I sub its first grade and I've only had one kid with the watch that kept going off, but, um, but I agree that that the kids, it's difficult when the kids are distracted by their phones, there's no question. Um, I know that it makes sense to me, and maybe, you know, maybe I'm up a tree, but I like the idea of the shoe thing and just coming in and putting your, you have your own spot, you have a number, you put your phone in your number, and at the end of class you pick it up. I know where my husband subs, the kids are not allowed to take their phones when they use the restroom. I know that as a rule. And I know that my granddaughter in middle school, um, in another community has two phone breaks during the day. And she is allowed, this this, whatever time it is, she's allowed to check her phone twice during the day. So those are the only things I know about cell phone things, but I I agree that if it is distracting and it it should be addressed. And the other thing is, I would like to survey the teachers before putting in anything to place, because I really don't want to be the board that goes down and messes up something that's working, you know? But if if we surveyed the teachers and see what their suggestions are, they may have way better ideas than I do, though. Tony, hats off to you for doing all that back work.
Every single person that wanted, that I asked that was a teacher, they had an opinion about this.
I bet they did.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Um, I'm I'm two minds of this, cause as a parent, I'm a lot stricter about cell phones. But as a school committee member, I I really would, I want to hear from the teachers, the administration, because if it becomes an administration issue, do they even have the resources to deal with what the first year we implement this will be an administrative?
with what the first year we implement this will be an administrative nightmare, getting kids used to whatever comes down? Um, I want to know what the teachers feel about it, and I do want to know what parents feel about it, and I do want to know what students feel about it, um, because those are important things. I know that some students have safety considerations about it. Um, so it's really hard to form an opinion. Uh, right now, it's pretty loosey-goosey, though, the way we handle it, which is it's up to the discretion of the teacher. And I do know there is teachers in the school who do the calculator pockets of just put your phone up here and you can get it on your way out of class, you can see your phone, don't be nervous, it's right there. Get it on your way out of class. But I also, I don't think they should have it during the day except for cellphone breaks or a chance to check it. They don't really get service in the building anyways unless they're using the wifi. So I think, I don't know, I'm a little on, on, in favor of they don't need it during the day, but that's my personal opinion, and it really depends what the teachers need us to put in place so that they can do their jobs best.
I think the other folks that need to be involved in the conversation are our IT department. Um, in talking with Mr. Santri about this, um, he would be very concerned with the zero tolerance policy because it does lead to much more um involvement with administration and discipline.
Like, we have to hire someone just to deal with that, the first.
Yeah. Um. But his suggestion, and I agree with it, um, is to push this back to the school advisory councils at each school um to do exactly what, what you suggested, that we need to survey to get information from a bunch of different stakeholders relative to what is the problem, because at different grade levels, it's a different problem. So a pol, a single policy that solves one problem may not solve a different problem that, that we have or make that problem worse. Um, which I know nobody would, would want to do there. Um, so it, it might be a matter of pushing it back to the school level to do some research and get some data and some possible solutions that the committee may want to consider and have more whole group discussion again before it goes to policy subcommittee to come up with a, a policy draft.
Yeah.
So as an individual, I am definitely hesitant to create any policy that would restrict the, uh, the cellphones. I think, uh, especially as a teacher, I think it should come back down to the teachers. You have different teachers, different styles. Uh, some have the pockets, they could have the cellphone pockets, other teachers don't want them. Uh, other teachers are utilizing the cellphones in class as part of the education. I think having that flexibility allows teachers to, to be themselves and teach the way they want to teach. And also I think discipline also starts in the classroom with the teacher. So the teachers are disciplining, disciplining the students, and I would expect that the administration would back up those teachers if, if they had an issue with cellphones or a student with their cellphone in the class. So I, honestly, I, I'd want to hear back from the teachers, but also I, I honestly, I, I think it should be left up to the teachers and have the teachers decide. But this is not a, an issue that is new, it's definitely been around all over every school and across the nation, so. It's a difficult.
I think an important question to ask here is the lev, both the official and unofficial level of empowerment that our teachers have when it comes to this today, right? Sitting here right now, I don't know. The, the answer to either of those questions, but what I'm very concerned about is the teacher who knows that the math teacher on either, you know, the math teacher who knows that the math teacher on either side of them doesn't care about cellphones and doesn't mind if the students are on the phones all, all the time during class using the calculator function or whatever. Meanwhile, you know, they're the ones that don't allow anything or wouldn't allow anything except for their peer pressure on either side of them, right? And I, 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 I'm purely projecting because I have no idea if that's a thing, but I, I do feel like it is somewhat our job to level the playing field and make, and make sure that they feel empowered to the degree that they feel necessary.
Yeah, in talking with Mr. Santri, he seemed to indicate to me that at the high school level, teachers can choose to let students use the phone during class time for different functions. Whereas at the middle school level, it's a no cellphone during school, and that's the level that seems to be presenting more of a challenge.
Oh, sure.
Because it's a zero, it's zero tolerance, no, no cell phone. So there, there tend to be more challenges there with student distraction because they're trying to sneak the phone and so on and so on. The other thing I will say, kids are pretty smart and they find workarounds. You do your lock bag for the day, and kids will bring their old phone and put it in the lock bag for the day, and they have their real phone in, in their pocket.
And I think we're trying to teach them. We're trying to teach them life skills too, like they're gonna have to go into a job and have their phone in their pocket and be able to decide, okay, now I can do my work, okay, I got a text, I can quickly respond to that, put it back in my pocket and get back to work.
The, the other thing too, I'll, I'll just throw it there. Um. In the world we live in today, when the worst possible situations occur in schools, yeah. Kids and staff are getting on cellphones and giving play-by-play information in real time to people who are responding.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's just the reality of where we are today. It's an important tool in a situation like that. So this is a big challenge, like this genie's been out of the bottle for a long time.
Yes.
Trying to put this back in the bottle is not, it's not gonna.
It's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen. It's more about being smart around how to navigate this so we're not creating incentive for kids to, you know, be distracted because they're trying to find ways to sneak and work around things. Um, but you don't also want to require that every teacher has to use cellphones in their classroom in, in a context of, you know, teaching day to day. Well, find a way to use your, your kids' cellphones in your class. Well, you don't, you don't want that either. Um, it, it, this is a really complex issue. Um, so I, I do think that there's gonna be a need for some data gathering and more conversation, and I, I don't think it's gonna be something that we're gonna get to real quickly. Nor, nor should we, because it's so complicated an issue. Um, but I think it's really good conversation to start to have, right? And the, like I said, the issues are gonna be different at different grade levels. Um, so I think we all need to be clear on what, what is the challenge at that level and what is the solution at that level.
Mr. Skolbrin?
So as we were talking, one other thing that I thought about was like having a policy that would work into the future. Like, I was at in-law school when cellphones did not do all the things that they do. And we talked about pen registries in constitutional law. And like, no one knew what they were then, and now they don't even exist. And so like, having a policy that can contemplate what kind of devices would exist in the future and how people would interact with them is really hard to do. But I think that we gotta make sure that we don't say like, you know, if you have a smartwatch, a cellphone or a tablet, because like, those things are gonna be different and look different and it's not gonna be the same. The other thing about future-proofing is I, I no longer get to go to school. I only go to school for like, you know, the legal requirements that you have to do to keep up your bar license. But the best class I have been in since my philosophy class taught by my favorite Jesuit priest at Boston College was a class put on by the federal court on the US sentencing guidelines, which is like the most boring topic ever. And they started the presentation by saying, everybody pull out your cellphones. And everyone kind of like looked around, and they did the entire presentation linked in to cellphones so that they would ask us a question, we would like get, it was almost like a game show. And I know, I know people that, you guys do this all the time, you're educators, but like, I found that so engaging and fascinating about how they delivered the information. And like, they were able to send like different video clips to different parts of the audience. It was, it was really incredible. And so like, that's the other way in which I think the policy should be eye, eye towards the future, not just future devices, but future teaching methods.
We're not writing a constitution, they're policies.
No, I know.
We review periodically. We don't need to future-proof them. We can update them.
One of the challenges around policy is not to get so into detail.
That's right.
Right. That it needs to be changed constantly.
But we don't have to worry about like ten years down the line, what, you know, the neural implants, like we don't have to.
But we, but we do need to, we do need to be thoughtful, particularly when it comes to how technology is leveraged and what are we exposing our kids to relative to the opportunities associated with technology and how technology can be used as a tool that there is a danger that we over-rotate away from technology.
That's right.
And in doing so, unintentionally shield them from that level of exposure, right?
Yeah.
Um, and I, I do worry about that. I mean, I work in a field that moves very fast. My company is completely focused right now on technology that two years ago I didn't know existed.
Right, 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 right.
Right, and it's a Fortune five, like, like it's a real big company, but AI has eaten the world and tech, and it has literally changed everything. And two years ago, I didn't know what a GPT was. I, I, if you would ask me with that acronym, I couldn't have told you. So.
Not the discussion topic.
But, but, but the point here is, is that like, we do have to be careful, right? We do have to be careful about unintentional consequences and, because we, our kids are gonna live in a world that is ten times more technically oriented than ours is. And we want them to be able to engage in that in a way that's productive and, and.
We don't want to make them afraid of it.
And that too, yeah.
All right, so I think we've had some good discussion on this, like to see if we can keep moving along. Uh, next discussion item is the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar?
So I thought I'd just bring this forward um for the committee. I, no, no decision needs to be made right now. Um, we're still in the process of gathering input on next year's school calendar from many different groups. The PACSOW uh meeting last time, uh Juliana Hanscom said that we were starting to look at this calendar and if anybody had thoughts relative to anything pertaining to the calendar, to please reach out to their school administration. Um, our in-school building leadership teams comprised of teachers and the administration, they are looking at it, they're talking about it at their school level. School advisory councils, I, I've asked all of the principals to make sure that it either got on to an agenda for a school advisory council, meaning if they had one later in this month or uh next month, to solicit some input there. Um, the, um, the teachers' union executive board is gonna look at it. Our PD committee has looked at it, they're offering their thoughts. So there's lots of conversation happening in all kinds of groups relative to um what should next year's calendar look like. Um, based on the way, the Christmas holiday fall and the New Year's holiday fall, we're in the same sort of situation we were a year ago when we were considering, is this a two-week school closure? And in having conversations with the district leadership team, we came back to some of the same worries that we hadn't shared with this body a year ago. Um, if we were to shut down for two weeks, um, students would leave at the end of the day on Friday, December nineteenth, and not come back to school until Monday, January fifth. That's sixteen days out of school. And some of the worry is for um some special education students for whom a lengthy uh break from school can lead to learning loss. Um, the same concern about students with food insecurity, that's a long time to be away from a resource that provides uh food. The other is for our students who have mental health need and the access to school counselors is the only mental health support they have. Particularly at a season of year that we see an uptick in mental health need, right? So those were some of the challenges that, that we see. Um, but again, we are still in the process of soliciting feedback from all kinds of groups. So I just wanted to, you know, let you see, you know, a calendar and where the actual dates map out. Um, most of you actually have an opportunity at a school advisory council meeting to weigh in on this. So we don't have to have a lengthy discussion this evening, but I figured I'd, I'd put it out there for your consideration um as a, as a whole committee, but also, you know, so that you're aware that this will be coming up at a school advisory council meeting in the next handful of weeks. So.
Ms. Asher though?
I just have a quick question. An early dismissal on Tuesday, December twenty-third, does that mean PD in the afternoon? I was gonna say that would be ridiculous.
That's too mean. That, that was one of the things that we thought might, might be a bit of a compromise.
Yeah.
Um, where the kids would be in on Monday, half-day Tuesday, all, everybody leaves early, but those kids have been in school, they've had a chance to see their counselors if they need to. They could be leaving with, with food to take home. Um, but yet everybody's sort of getting off to vacation a little bit earlier than they would. Um, you know, that was just a thought that some of us at the, um, the district leadership thought might, might be a compromise, right? Um, believe me, I know that most of the teachers would, would like to have the shutdown and have a lengthy break. I, I, I understand that.
Oh, as a parent, I absolutely, I'm like, two weeks, let's do it, but.
Mr. Beadmore? Do we know, in, like, have you surveyed your peers in surrounding communities about the decision we came to a year ago relative to their decisions? Are there any two-week blocks that are happening this year in the surrounding area?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that there are. I do believe, um, as an example, Clinton uh is closed for the two weeks this year. Um, I'm sure that there are others in the area too, because again, you know, how, how often do, do these things line up that it could potentially close for two weeks and?
So I, my, my reason for asking is, is we do have a little bit of time on this, and I, I would like to get some informal feedback through your channels, maybe in January, about how is this actually playing out? Um, you know, particularly in towns of, you know, similar size and demographics like Clinton. Uh, I would be curious. Um, I, I swing the other way. Uh, I'm for coming to school on twenty-second and twenty-third and, you know, eleven days or twelve days should be sufficient.
Oh, no, I think that's.
And, and I, I just, that's where I, but.
Oh, yeah, I, I think as school committee, we should do the, the, the twenty-second and the twenty-third. That seems to be the right way to go as a parent. I would look at that and go, yeah, two weeks. But the, the correct thing to do would be the twenty-second and the twenty-third. Also, we should keep in mind the graduation date issue with the graduation and the twelve days.
When we took a look at that, um, I think, I think the way things mapped out, we, we should still be okay to proceed with um graduation on the first Saturday in June, assuming that you don't have.
Snow days and it's.
Snow days in excess of five days.
Assuming it's not twenty-fifth.
It's been a few years since we've had a monstrous snow year, so.
Mr. Skolbrin?
I don't know, much Iranian summer.
Uh, other than we're attempting the weather cut, so we're gonna get obliterated this year.
The woolly bears this year.
Yeah.
And the acorns.
If, I mean, we're essentially trying to stay open to combat learning loss and to make sure that kids that receive stability from school.
Have it.
Have it. Um, so like, what's the downside in the half-day? Um, so like, what's the downside in the half-day plan? I mean, other than logistics for parents?
I, I think, I think teachers would argue that a week that's only a day and a half long is not worth having, right? Um.
They're not gonna learn a lot, but that's not necessarily why we're staying open.
Right, I think that, I think honestly, for the teachers at the table, um, I think that there's a difference when we were having this conversation for this year's calendar, returning two days post-holiday. And the quality of the learning that could occur two days returning post-holiday compared to two days pre-holiday, not the same level of learning. Yeah, which one is more? Um, I think after the holiday, people, minds have shifted past the holiday. I think pre-holiday, you, especially little ones, right? Like, they're a little wound up and I think even teachers and other staff with, you know, Hanukkah and Christmas and people are rush, 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 busy, busy, busy. So e- even teachers, I think, um, you know, there, there's a difference, I think, in a mindset, coming in two days before the holiday versus coming in two days after the holiday break, at the, at, relative to the quality of the instruction.
So very cool to make the twenty-third a PD day.
Although I will tell you this, that the first year I was here, the twenty-third was an early release PD day. And I thought, who does that?
Ebenezer Scrooge.
I, like, at that, so we start doing that. Because that's not the best kind of engagement that you would get from staff, right, on that day. So I mean, I, I think there's an argument to make that the two days heading into a break not exactly apples with the two days coming out and returning from break. Um, but I do, I, I do think potentially there's still a there's still a potential for some better quality those two days than two days on June seventeenth and eighteenth. Right, when it's hot and kids are kind of done and we're at the end.
And that, that's my concern too, is that the, the June dates are just adding up, the more December day you take off. Uh, I was looking at even just the calendar and it, it does happen. It was, uh, year twenty-fourteen, fifteen, and from, from where I work, it was, we definitely worked that Monday, Tuesday. I didn't, I couldn't find the Luna break calendar from fourteen, fifteen, but I think it's very typical. I think this, the Clinton probably cases are rare where they take the multiple days off. Because again, you're just adding it to the December break. I think getting through two days or even a day and a half, I'd support the half-day or the full day, doesn't matter. But I think getting through those two days is not that bad of a stretch just to get through two days. And it gets you that much sooner out in June. So I would support the, the dismissal on the twenty-third.
I, I would like to hear what the advisory committees.
Yeah, yeah.
You know. Oh, and I think the collaboration is huge.
I, I think, you know, you and I agree on this. And I, I'm very, my, my principal concern is those, those students that are living on the margins. And we need to, you know, do whatever we can to take care of them.
I did actually ask the PTO if they would take that up at their next, um, meeting in early December to, to get some feedback from another parent group. Um, but I did convey the, the couple of key concerns that we had about a lengthy closure. Um, which were really about student need, not, not so much the, is a December twenty-second day the same quality instruction as a, you know, January, uh, June seventeenth day?
Yeah, people don't connect that those two days off also add two days to your June school days. Alright.
So work in progress, more information coming in. That will all contribute to, uh, the development of a draft that will, that will bring back. And we'll be able to share the input that, that we received from a variety of, of groups.
Alright.
Okay.
So next item of the agenda is a discussion on topics for the delegation. So I had put this in, I think we had some initial ideas we had kinda thrown out. Um, so I had reached out to the delegation, uh, the two representatives and the senator. Um, Margaret Scarsdale, uh, Representative Scarsdale reached out. She said she would like to have the delegation do a private meeting to start. Uh, before we did a public meeting, they thought they could get more done, uh, have more frank conversations about, uh, different options or potential options, uh, constraints and insights and give some advice in more of a private setting. So I invited the, the chair of the select board as well, as well as, uh, Mandy, who's been involved in a lot of the, the interactions too with Miss, uh, with Representative Scarsdale. So they'll also be attending, um, but I want to get them out on the agenda ahead of time so they can kinda brainstorm, um, their thoughts and then I can bring back and the superintendent can bring back, uh, how the meeting went.
My two cents is I would, I would advise against that. I, I think that there have been plenty of invitation-only meetings. And I, I think that a public meeting is necessary to talk about, in particular, chapter seventy funding. What's been done, what's the plan, and how are we gonna get there?
Yeah, so I did talk with Representative Scarsdale about that. And she said, there's probably not gonna be that much that they're gonna be able to do this year. But there's some potential other avenues to, to get us more funding.
Is that what she said, this year or last year?
Yeah, I mean, let's have the discussion in public.
Was that, was that last?
Job to. No, as, uh, as I was trying to prepare, I, I, I opened it up to a public meeting and gave them the next three meetings, which one they would like to, to meet. They reached back saying they would prefer a private meeting to start.
Okay, are they aware of, like, open meeting law?
That's, that's exactly their concern. They're, they're worried about the open meeting law and.
No, but we're subject to it, so.
Oh, it wouldn't be all of us, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I don't think you should participate.
I mean.
I, I mean, my, my view is, you, you've already been invited to a multiple participant invitation-only meeting. And the, the answer that we got at that time was that they would be more than happy to meet with us following the election. Here we are. So we're gonna kick the can or not?
I, I don't think we're kicking the can, we're just having a private meeting instead of a public meeting.
I, I don't, I mean, personally, I think that you should take any opportunity you can to talk to the people who control state money and have an integral role in providing funding for the schools. If it's not useful, I mean, a lot of stuff in politics is not useful. So like, but if you have the chance, I mean, that's the important part, I think we should take it. If I was gonna put something on the agenda, I think that they need to consider a discreet fix to the busing cost increase problem. There is, and there are a bazillion solutions and there is a clear problem. And no one has done anything to address the problem. And the problem ultimately comes down to the fact that if we only have two and a half percent increase on residential property taxes and the rate of increase for busing outstrips two and a half percent, like everything else right now, it's just a place where we're always going to fall behind. The difference with the busing thing is there are discreet targeted ways to fix the problem. So I want, I would love to have all three of them focus for five minutes and say, you need to give us some indication that you will fix this problem before it makes it impossible for us to, to function. I mean, like, it's not my favorite thing or the most glamorous thing that we spend money on. But if we don't have a way to get the kids here, cause busing is too expensive, it, it is, you know, it is a, what is it? A, a necessary but not sufficient condition of education. You have to have them here and it is getting more expensive really for no reason. Like, we're not, we're not like upgrading to like limo buses or something. It's just, they're charging us more cause they can, cause they know they have no competition. So that would be one thing I would love to have them just say, put on the record, we will, we will work to address this. Whatever their solution is, I don't care, but just something that puts some forward momentum on this problem.
Thank you. Ms. Ashenbaum?
Um, I, I would say, I agree with Tony in that meeting with the delegation any way you can is, is fine, but I also agree with Peter, they need to come here at some point and talk to us. Because I know, I spoke with each of them individually last fall, um, and didn't get anywhere, but I did. Um, but I think they need to come here and speak to us. But my laundry list is the same as everybody else's, I'm sure. They gotta straighten out the chapter seventy funding. We need, they voted, actually, one, one part, either the Senator, the House voted on a financial literacy mandate and the other one didn't. But if it had gone through, they weren't funding it.
Right.
So they don't, they can't give us more stuff to do that they don't fund. There, and we've said that to them before, I'd say it again. And, um, if they could do anything to help either through the schools or through communities on getting kids' mental health support in a faster manner. I mean, if, if you wanna give the, uh, schools more counselors, that would be helpful. If you wanna give community centers more counselors, that would be helpful. I don't know, maybe these people don't exist. If you can figure out how to manufacture them, that would be helpful. But that, that's a major, to me, a very major thing, along with the food insecurity. And once again, it, it's paramount that school lunch stays free.
Yes.
And it, it obviously isn't gonna be free at the federal level anymore and it hasn't been this year. I don't think they're going back there. And, um, it's very important that it remains free. And anything else they can do throughout the Commonwealth to give people food that need it, whether it's through schools or through food banks or that. And the last thing was this health insurance stuff. I can't imagine what they could do about that, but if, if they have any ideas, that's ridiculous.
Ms. Brzowski?
Um, so a lot of the bus infrastructure things that the state legislature has been focusing on seems to be very electric bus focused, which isn't, that's not helping us. That's not where we're bleeding, like, that's great, that's, that's fantastic for the future, but like, we're bleeding now, we need help now. Sort of thing. Um, the chapter seventy inflation adjustment issue where, uh, inflation is, the inflation is limited. And the state legislature last year declined to go back and fix it. Uh, if they could look into that and maybe fix it this year, that would be fantastic. Um, I don't know what the other thing was. Um, oh, and I, I know that Representative Scarsdale had put a lot of effort into the, the regionalized school support and I understand why, I, I totally understand why. What is it, five out of six of her towns are regionalized? But we could really use the help too, because the money that she was bringing in for the regionals was not gonna come to us or help us last year, um, not that it came to fruition anyways. Um, so just if you could remind her to please keep in mind, we are not a regional school. Um, and I know we're just one very small component of her electorate, but we're not regionalized.
Thank you. Mr. Beardmore, did you have anything else to add?
I don't disagree with anything that's been said here. I, I think we need to apply pressure and, and we're not. We're continuing to play the game. And in three months, we're gonna be back in that auditorium with a crowd full of people yelling at us about what have we done and who have we held accountable and what are we doing? And this is the night that we should be doing that. And we should be putting on our agenda from now until town meeting legislative delegation. And if they show up, they show up, and if they don't, they don't. But they have an open invitation to come here. I, I will reach out to each of them individually by email following this meeting tonight and try to understand their individual intentions. But starting next week, next meeting, I'm going on full blast on this. Because I do not wanna be in the same situation where we are getting ambiguous answers from. And just, just for, to remind everybody, right? If you recall, the last time we had a public meeting with our legislators, it was a joint meeting of the finance committee, the select board and the school committee. And I think we got maybe about ten minutes of airtime in that meeting. And we were told by one of the legislators that he was asked by the chair of another board not to meet with us.
Yeah.
So we deserve better than this.
So just to be clear.
I just, I, I feel like we're being told that there's more to do before we meet with you. No, there's no more to do before they meet us.
We also.
So just to be clear, the meeting is not like a, a collaboration of all the different committees that was the last time, right? So this is gonna be a, a school committee meeting that I am inviting the, the select board chair, cause I want him to hear the concerns of the schools as well.
We also got the message last year, you should have asked sooner, you should have talked to us sooner. Why didn't you talk to us sooner?
And this is why we.
We didn't know you were having problems, which everyone was having problems. So we're trying to talk to them. The private meetings, I think it's great, but it's, it's just you and then a few select community members who are supporters of the electorates who, who are meeting. And it's just, it feels like an open meeting. I understand we're bound by open meeting laws, so we can't have a private meeting with everyone. But it, it, it seems like it would be beneficial if we could all meet, because I'm not sure what's, it, it would be beneficial.
Yeah. Mr. Skolbrin?
One thing that I, I wanted to ask them, and I know that there's not a whole lot they can do to this. But if you look at some of the information about what is proposed for the upcoming US Department of Education, there are two things that I, I would want to get their opinions on. And the first is, what happens if the Department of Education seeks the legislative repeal of Title One? Because that would have valutrious impacts on us, on our kids, on this school district. It would be really, really bad. The other thing is, what would happen if they seek the repeal, the legislative repeal of Title Nine? Or of major parts of Title Nine? Um, I think that the people that will likely be the head of the Department of Education and the audience that she will be acting to curry favor with are not people that understand how those funding mechanisms work and how those laws work on the ground. And so we need to be prepared that if that happens, that our, our only other protection is the state of Massachusetts. And so I don't think they're gonna be able to have any policy commitments, but I think that they need to be aware that like, local towns, local school boards are concerned about this and they would need to step into the gap if that happens. Cause like, I don't know how, what percentage of our budget comes from Title One, but it would be.
Well, between that and the, um, monies that we receive for special education.
Right, right, it would be.
It would be devastating.
Yeah, so if they were to.
I've already thought.
And I, I know that there is a commitment from people to repeal Title One. So.
I do have faith in them for that, for protections for that. I do, I do have.
Dr. Burnham, did you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Alright, moving on. Next item of the agenda is reports. We just go down the line, Ms. Brzowski?
It's a long one. I'm really sorry. Um, so at the beginning of the month, right after our last meeting, I went to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, uh, annual conference. It's a joint conference of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, uh, which spells out M-A-S-S, which I really like. Uh, so the school, it's school committee members and superintendents across, from across the state, and I think there were eight hundred and fifty people in attendance. Uh, it was on the Cape. There was a keynote speech by, I went for one day, um, just on Thursday, cause that was the only day I could get away for. So there was a keynote speech by Tim Schreiber, who's the son of Buna Schreiber, uh, who talked about dignity, the foundation of a new patriotism, and if you're interested in it, you can Google, uh, the dignity index. It's an eight-point index of communicating, of, uh, rating communication from contempt to dignity, starting with, uh, level one, which is phrases where the other side isn't human, is othered, or we have a moral duty to destroy. Uh, all the way up to level eight where you refuse to hate and honor opposition's views no matter what. Um, and it was good basic points about respect and dignity and he was trying to encourage school systems to adopt it. And then someone asked, what about hate? And then someone asked, what about hate speech? And it kinda fell apart with the paradox of intolerance and hate speech. But it's an interesting way of looking at things. So, if you're interested, you can Google Dignity Index. Then I went to the School and Municipal Collaboration Supporting Common Goals, which discussed informal versus formal government. And a very long time was spent just discussing how town government works to a bunch of people on the school committee who already understand it. So, there was a lot of discussion. One town had a budget task force, which had a two, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-two-page report.
We're not doing that.
Yeah. Um, that's, uh, so, in Wellesley, the DPW does playgrounds and schools and parks and all the fields and all outdoors. And they work closely, the school committee works closely with planning and zoning, so anything like potential developments and routes to school, they, they consider all that. Hingham, their DPW took over mowing, plowing, and combined with the school to save money. I think that was as a result of a budget task force. Hingham also saved money by leasing their buses from a company. And then they used an existing town bus depot that was already existing, and the town hired drivers. So, that's how they cut their busing costs, by using an existing depot, leasing the buses, and then hiring the bus drivers as town employees, which I thought was interesting. Wellesley School has a substantial special ed stabilization fund for unexpected things, so I definitely wanted to note that down. And they sometimes use the special ed stabilization fund, I believe, to prepay special ed tuition ahead of time, which legally you can do.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so I wanted to note that down, 'cause I didn't know that. Budgeting starts early as soon as possible, we know that. Include in your budgeting the revolving budget, so that you always have those numbers, and make sure to build up and preserve your revolving budget even in lean times. And don't be afraid of debt, because debt is healthy for your municipality, which I thought we could all use that reminder, 'cause I think we're afraid of it sometimes. Leadership Stability for Positive Outcomes, which was about long-term leadership in school superintendents. And they had a superintendent there who had been in the role for nineteen years, which is a really long time. And they talked about collaboration between school committee and superintendent, how culture is set by the interaction, communication, relationship, and trust. And it's a common goal working together, and how school committee really needs to support their staff and always have their staff's back, especially the superintendent's back. The one, the superintendent who'd been there for nineteen years talked about making sure that the school committee is fed as much information as possible, not just the bare minimum. And the school committee should look to feedback from their superintendent about how they're doing and, and the direction that they should be moving in, or possible goals. School committee member talked about the importance of being a committee and not getting invested in personal side projects, and working as a unified team towards your goals, and definitely not those side projects. Each school committee need, member needs meaningful work, meaning subcommittees. So, when they have new members come on, they find out what their passions are, what's important to them, and then they do subcommittee assignments. I think they have a lot more subcommittees than we do. And then they do subcommittee assignments, so that person feels invested and isn't just attending the big, the big meetings. And don't micromanage and understand board management. And the Mass, the superintendent said communication is key, constant contact, never surprises, and talked about how they email members every Friday with everything that happened that week, who they met with, a brief synopsis of the meeting, staffing changes or issues, or any union grievances that might be coming up, or pending and potential issues. And another one talked about tailoring weekly communication, which I think is a lot of work for the superintendent, to the board's preferences for their check-ins. And talked about how some board members prefer texts, so we text, and some prefer calls, so we call, and some prefers meetings, so we meetings, but that sounds like-
A lot of board.
A lot of work, and I think they had a seven-person board, and I'm like, that's a lot of time. But intra-board, they also talked about intra-board communications, even if the Finance Committee is scary. I have a feeling a lot of school committees are terrified of the Finance Committee. There was a lot of mention of scary Finance Committees. And maintaining communication between boards, especially around budget season, and no surprises. Then the school budgeting, school committee, I went to another one, and I didn't take notes, because there wasn't, I didn't get much out of that one. Then there was school budgeting, school committee authority, and fiscal responsibility for the financial reports that are quarterly, four parts. The adopted budget amount, the expanded amount, projections for the end of the fiscal year, and the projections are not, are the full picture, not just encumbrances, and then a narrative for the projection. They talked about stuff we're already doing, that I got a feeling a lot of people in the room were not already doing, like warrants, and line item transfers. So, and doing line item transfers quarterly. And they talked about some other stuff that we're already doing great, so I didn't take notes on that, so, good job. Grants, the school committee by law needs to accept all grants and donations, including entitlement grants, according to the slide. Like, including the entitlement grants, which I'm not, are we doing that?
We don't have an official vote to accept that.
Yeah, so technically-
Part of the budget, technically it's revenue in the budget.
According, I didn't, she didn't write down the statute. She said, see the newsletter, and then I saw the newsletter, and it didn't have it either. We're supposed to vote on all grants and donations, no matter the number, even the entitlement grants. And we're also supposed to vote as school committee, 'cause there are, of the things that we do, we are required to vote on, there's not that many. One of them is new job descriptions, which require a vote of approval. Positions added or changed, or whenever a job description changes at all, we should be voting on that to make sure that it aligns with our goals and vision for the future. General stuff from talking to people informally and informal discussions, 'cause it was really great meeting other school committee members and seeing how they do it. I wanted to say, I really appreciate Dr. Gilson. Thank you for hiring Dr. Gilson. We are in a really good place, because there are a ton of people out there trying to hire a finance director right now. It's even worse, I think, than when we were trying to hire, and we are very lucky, because she is very competent and capable. So, not just that we have a finance director, but we have one who is so capable and on top of things. So, shout out to Dr. Gilson.
You're not allowed to go anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody asked me her name, and I was like, ugh.
I forget.
Covering the name tag, like, don't look her up, no. Although I did run into a few people who knew her and loved her, like, her old superintendent, like, she's just, yeah, people love her. And I also wanted to take a moment to appreciate our SROs, because in talking to other districts, I didn't realize how blessed we are to have the specific SROs we have. It's a really fine line to walk, and it looks like the success of that prod, of that program comes down to two things, which is the culture of a town's police department, which I think Chief Gamble really said, that culture. And I think that also comes down to the individual officers, that is a superfine line to walk, and I think we are incredibly blessed. And I'm not talking about Hank, I'm specifically talking about Officer McNamara and now Officer Monroe. So, I, I really wanted to appreciate that, 'cause talking to other people without saying what other issues are, I think we are very lucky to have the officers, the specific officers we do. There were a lot of budget task force, task forces across the state. They all had, they all had different names, but they were all the same basic things. Some were huge, some were tiny. One of them had a town manager, but didn't allow him to speak. He had to just observe and could be asked questions directly, but wasn't allowed to participate.
Must be lots of problems.
Yeah, so there were lots of budget task forces across the state. Nobody had any big solutions. Nobody gave us any great giant solutions. There was a ton of merging DPW services with school services. That seemed to be the main takeaway, especially plowing. And there was a bit of athletic fields and playgrounds merging with parks or DPW, or like, all athletic fields falling under one, and so it wasn't parks, DPW, and schools. A lot of people reported attempts by towns to merge IT, where tons of people came and said, why don't we merge IT departments? So, a lot of school committees across the state spent a lot of time having to explain why that wouldn't work. And I didn't hear of anyone who actually merged departments. Busing was a really hot topic. Everyone is suffering from busing issues. Everyone is suffering from the price increases. But there was only one panel on it, and it was at seven forty-five on Thursday morning. I drove here, from here to the Cape, so I didn't make it in time. I was, I was late to that one. I did not make it there for seven forty-five, I didn't get there until late fifteen. So, that wasn't even a panel on busing. It was a panel on the alternative fuel, school transport, and electric buses, basically. And nobody seemed to have a solution. And I did try to find some of the Cape people, because the, they have a busing collaborative on Cape Cod, because Cape Cod is more spread out, and they have more regionalized. But I didn't manage to find anyone to ask them about their collaborative. So, it was nice to hear from other districts about what we have in common, and see we're not alone in the big issues. It was really nice to see that under Dr. Burnham's leadership, there are a lot of issues that we have managed to avoid. So, thank you. There's a lot of things that I just sat there going, oh, nope, yeah, good, we're, we're, we're good there. And it is really interesting to see the differences in some of the issues facing the other towns, like, the ones in Boston have far different issues than we do, and then the ones in the Berkshires have much different issues in a different way. So, it was, it was interesting to see. And I know the budget's tight, but it might, it might be worth thinking about adding the conference back in the budget again. MASC actually comped me a day pass this year, because it's, it's five hundred bucks to go, and I didn't wanna pay five hundred bucks to go for one day. So, they were nice enough to comp me for the day, and then I just drove to the Cape and back. But like, if we get new members who wanna go, I can't see asking them to pay to attend, but it might be really beneficial to them. However, you know, the budget. But I know we used to have that as a line item in the budget, and no one was using it, and that's part of why it got taken out. But it, it would be nice if I could go and not have to pay. And I also did the MASC Summer Institute, which was sixty dollars, and I did that out of my own pocket, but it would be nice not to have to pay to volunteer, so. Yeah, that was it, and then I drove home, home really late at night.
Sounds like a good day.
It was really nice out, it was a day that was like sixty-eight degrees, and I didn't get to see the beach at all.
Ms. Beardmore?
Capital Planning Committee has not met since we have last met. Their chairman did not realize that Veterans Day was a holiday, despite being a veteran, and was unable to post a meeting in time. So, we will be meeting on December second, and we'll be considering all of the proposals that have been made to all of the departments. One topic that I did bring up with the superintendent prior to this meeting tonight is that I'm going to recommend to the Capital Planning Committee that we remove the items that have been funded by ARPA. Some of you may recall that in previous years, ARPA-funded items like an ambulance and another heavy equipment, a couple of, a couple of those trucks, were included in the town manager's capital plan with ARPA as a funding source. But given the timing of the ARPA deadline relative to town meeting, it seems to me that it, it's, would be better just to completely separate those, those items. I will have a discussion with it, and Carter is, will be at the meeting on December second. So, we'll probably be having at least one discussion with him in advance of that, and then another discussion at the town meeting. But my preference would be to remove the, the truck and plow and the window film for this building from, from that discussion. So, if anybody has any objections, please let me know.
What was the purpose of leaving them on Capital Planning?
It's really procedural, more than anything else. The idea would be, you know, if for some reason, for example, we were not able to contract it by the deadline at the end of the year, or there was some snafu or something, it's part of, you know, of a prioritization that could be funded through capital funds as a backup, right? So, it's largely procedural. I don't anticipate that happening with the ARPA funds, given the current level of attention that that's getting from the town manager and the Select Board, but, you know. So, that's Capital Planning. Turkey Hill, excuse me, not Turkey Hill, Town Manager, that's a different acronym. Town Manager Selection Committee met in executive session on Monday night of this week, and we will be meeting on December eleventh and twelfth to conduct interviews of candidates and hopefully report out finalists for consideration by the Select Board. That's it.
Ms. Ashenbaum?
The only one I have is the Master, oops, is the Master Planning Steering Committee, and they met on November fourteenth, and I was unable to attend, but, and there was, the agenda was somewhat vague, and they weren't recorded, and there aren't any minutes. So, I'm not quite sure what happened, but I will get on that. But one of the things that did happen is I got this spreadsheet thing from the consultant stating that I was to put what I thought were critical needs for the community and what was important to the community on this, my personal beliefs, and send it back in. Well, we've been working a lot of those things. If you've been to any of the Master Planning meetings, that's what it's all about. They are having a public meeting on December fourth, and I believe this will be the discussion. I am not comfortable with the school section just putting in my thoughts, because I represent the school committee. So, I talked to the superintendent, and she very nicely offered to send this out to everybody, and if you could just fill back in what you feel is important and not important, so that I can turn it in by the second of December, then I would feel better about that. I don't think I should answer those things. Some of the things that are suggested, well, let me backtrack. This group in general is not concerned with how things will be financed. So, there, there's a lot, I mean, and that is the, the way this works, apparently. It's, it's with the direction, the pie in the sky. In an ideal world, where do you wanna be? That's what this is. So, some of these things couldn't possibly be funded. And some of these things, we probably would say we can't do, you know. One example would be to open the school greenhouse to the larger community. Well, we could do that.
That's on the questionnaire that they sent out.
Well, yeah, this is the same thing.
Yeah.
So, you know, things like that, we would be all over, because we can't have people wandering around this building. So, you know, there are some things that I'm not sure everybody understands the, what could happen if, if these things came through. But anyways, to make a, a long story, which is too long already, short. If you could send this back to the superintendent, and she can give it to me, so I can get it to them in a timely manner, then I will feel better. I can fill out the rest of the stuff that's at my whim, but I don't feel that is. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Skellon Brady?
Budget Task Force met at, we, we gave a very brief, less than three minutes. I had the person from the town time me, there was twenty-one seconds left. It was under-three-minute presentation at the special town meeting about ideas that we have on the table for recommendations to other town committees, and a request for help. We then met on Monday, and we discussed a bunch of different solutions. We went through basically the punch list that we had generated for the pro, throughout the process in anticipation of writing a very brief, not one hundred and twenty-two-page executive summary of the Budget Task Force findings and our recommendations. One of the things that we considered, and we talked about extensively, was the Community Preservation Act funding. And we had talked about it before, but like, there was this concern about it being not that valuable, and at the same time, not that fine-tuned an instrument. But researching how Townsend does it, and Townsend passing it or renewing it this past election gave us new insights on what it would look like. And so, we have a flex meeting scheduled as our second to the last meeting, and that flex meeting will now be focused on getting information about affordable housing in Lunenburg. And this is because part of the funding requirements, or part of the spending requirements for CBA funds is that at least ten percent- is that at least ten percent has to go towards affordable housing. And so before we make the recommendation that we should put CPA on the agenda for town meeting in May, we wanted to figure out, would we even be able to do this uh and meet the ten percent spending requirement? So the last meeting before we have our final meeting, where we wrap everything up, is going to be focused on affordable housing stock in ways in which you could spend the affordable housing ten percent in Lunenburg. So hopefully we'll have some ideas. Uh, I, I think that like, the problem that we have is that Prop two and a half has locked, locked us into a funding death spiral in an age of inflation. And we, as a town, because of state tax laws, have very few levers to turn, and the CPA might be one of them. So I hope that we can find some consensus on that in the next meeting. But again, if anybody has any ideas, please, please come and share them.
Yeah, I'll forward you a contact I have from Shirley, but Shirley also passed that.
Okay, okay.
Recent, like, before Townsend did.
Excellent.
They have a little bit more experience.
Excellent, we need some ideas.
Uh, Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee presented at the Fall Town Meeting, Special Town Meeting. Uh, we also had a meeting Monday to go over questions that we wanted to ask in our interview of the, the one candidate, and then we had that uh interview tonight before this meeting, and it went really well. And I think we'll, again, continue to, to proceed on that timeline. Uh, the primary school meet on Monday. That's all I had. Next item of the agenda is public comment. Uh, open up to public comment from the public. Just raise your virtual hand or unmute yourself. All right, uh, open up to public comment from the committee. Seeing none, uh, next item of the agenda is topics for future discussion. Any additional topics? Feel free to reach out to me here at Dr. Burnham, if you think of anything after. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-one PM.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.